I'd like to call the ordinance committee to order. We have before us this evening Councilor 2016-133 Urban Revitalization and Development Plan, Amendment Number Four, as well as Councilor 2016-078, updated URDP Section 12 Point 023, Section 2B covenant definition update. Pursuant to the meeting law, you may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether received or unreceived, by those present and are deemed to acknowledge the inaudible speech.
Okay.
Please, our people, please follow.
Council King.
President.
Council Pearl.
President.
Council Boma.
President.
Council Finn.
President.
Council Harris.
Present.
Council Yen.
Present.
Council Tamucci.
Present.
Chairman Morris.
Present.
And Council Paul is sitting right here.
Great. So with that, we are going to start this evening's meeting with a presentation from the administration. I'd like to call Mr. Phil Viall to the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. Through you two members of the committee, we're here this evening to lay the foundation for the council as to the rationale underpinning the amendment to the URDP that we filed with the council entitled URDP Number Four. The purpose of this meeting is a public meeting so that we can share with the council a number of the elements that are being updated in the URDP, which was initially adopted nearly ten years ago. It's important to note that not only has there been, in that ten-year period, a significant change in the membership of council, so that many, if not most, of the councillors were not members of the city council, which led to the URDP was first promulgated and then it was amended in a new course a couple of times. And, of course, there are new councillors who were not involved with that at all. It seemed clear that a teaching moment had arrived in terms of educating members of the council as to the underpinnings of the rationale for the urban redevelopment plan that the city has been attempting to implement over the course of the last number of years. And there have been significant changes. The most significant of those changes is the fact that the initial scheme that had been approved by the council a number of years ago has changed. The vision for what we hope to accomplish in revitalizing the downtown and making it once again an economic engine for the city of Quincy, that vision hasn't changed as it relates to the type of niche use development that we hope to encourage and inspire and incentivize through this plan. What has changed really is the mechanics, are the mechanics, that we will be employing. The prior plan relied upon the designation of one master developer. There was only one agreement, and that agreement, that land disposition agreement, was with that developer. And for a variety of reasons, including the terrible economic compression that the country suffered in 2008, 2009, and just began to come out of over the course of the last several years, that unfortunately led to the demise of that developer's ability to raise the capital necessary to move forward with development. The city commissioned a plan, a so-called Redgate Plan, that reviewed its situation as of two years ago and made new recommendations that it would be more workable for the city to assume for itself and its citizens the role of being the master developer and supervise prospective developments with a variety of private parties and work on a development-by-development process that will be the new procedure, the new template, the new roadmap that we use with this body to guide future development. They will be incrementable, they will be in digestible bites, they will be predicated upon a very rigorous review and due diligence of the financing for these particular projects. And then each of them will be incremental and synergistic in value as to inspiring nearby developers. So our plan is to focus on the Hancock Lot and the areas surrounding the Hancock Lot and to work with, now I believe, two specific developers to commence some developments in the near term. It is the hope of the administration that we will be able to come back before the council in the fall with negotiated LDAs. And here's the big issue, I think, for the council and for the administration, is that these LDAs will be subject to the council's full review and approval. That is going to be the case, indeed, with every LDA. This provides the council far more input, far more involvement, far more transparency than the prior plans that were envisioned for Streetworks, so that this council will be involved. The other context here is a very important context, is that we're at, as a city, at a once-in-a-century moment really. Much of the city's infrastructure, particularly the infrastructure in downtown Quincy, is over a century old. And I know that all of us have had to bear the burden of coping with the construction that's repairing that. But it's necessary construction, and it's a once-in-a-century opportunity for us to replace that infrastructure, prepare our city for the new century ahead. These projects, we're familiar with them, the rerouting of the Town Brook, Gaylighting Town Brook, the Mayor Hannan Crosstown Parkway, a number of the utilities, I call that the underground work, that a lot of people don't understand or appreciate, but it's absolutely essential in terms of upgrading our utilities. Through a variety of financing sources, the city has expended eighty million dollars over the course of the last decade in upgrading that infrastructure. It's created thousands of jobs already. The template, the roadmap that we have included in URDP Number Four is the path forward for us to continue that type of improvement in our community and to inspire the kind of economic development and investment that we hope we will see in the near term now that we have this plan underway. There's two other items that I'd like to reference. One is that at one of the prior meetings, there was an order submitted to the council related to covenants, the covenants that apply to private development on private property. All LDAs involve disposition of public property. And we had a spirited debate here when that language was first offered. The administration had replied to that issue by offering a language which can be found in URDP Number Four, as amended for this evening's meeting. This afternoon, I became aware of new language offered by councillors, and I became aware of that through the city council's, the legal council, Mr. Chey, and I understand those councillors are going to offer that language later on this evening when we get to the portion of the proceedings where it will be appropriate to discuss that language. And finally, there will be on the council agenda, not on this agenda here this evening, a request by the administration for an appropriation of a million dollars. And that million dollars will be for the purpose of allowing us during the course of the next several months to continue to provide consulting and design services for the infrastructure work that we wish to undertake in the next phase and to prepare an RFP for the construction of a desperately needed garage that will be required to provide parking for the development we do foresee in the near future. And that will be, I understand, referred to the appropriate committee of tonight's council meeting, but I did want to alert you to the fact that we have made that request, and that will link into the presentation that you will see this evening as to the methodologies that are used to finance all of the activities we need to implement to succeed in the implementation of the URDP. So with that, I'll turn to the teachable moment and introduce two gentlemen who have actually been involved with the URDP since its inception. And the first person to hear from is Mr. Jeff Fascher of the DSC Group, and he, in many ways, has been the urban planner who has walked through the development of this vision through the course of the last decade. So with that, I'm going to ask Jeff to step to the podium and begin his presentation. I would also request, if possible, for him to be allowed to complete his presentation and questions become at the conclusion. It's not a lengthy presentation, and he will have the ability to go back to any particular slide, any councillor has a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Again, my name is Jeff Fascher. I am a planner and urban designer with the DSC Group, and as Bill mentioned, I've been involved with this project going back about ten years now. Prior to that, I actually worked for the City of Worcester, Worcester Development Authority, and had been involved in a number of different urban renewal projects over the years, but I was involved with the Worcester Project, the Medical City Downtown Urban Renewal Project, maybe fifteen years ago, as well as the development of Urban Renewal Plan for the Union Station area in Worcester. So if any of you are familiar with Worcester, those are two projects I've been involved with. And again, I've continued to be involved in urban renewal projects in the most recent years. What we'd like to do tonight is give you a brief history of what started ten years ago and how we got to where we are today, then talk about the current amendment very briefly, then Craig Seymour from RKG Associates will talk about the financial plan that's part of this amendment, and then we'll open up the questions, comments, happy to answer anything you'd like to hear about. Again, as I mentioned, this, and as most of you know, this project started about ten years ago with the Vision Plan, and then from that evolved the original Urban Renewal Plan. There have been a number of amendments since that time. As Bill mentioned, there was a master developer involved at one point. City has cut ties with that person, that company, and we're now looking to amend the plan so that we can continue to move forward, similar to the original vision that was developed almost ten years ago. Speaking of that vision, this is a plan that was developed by Goodie Crancy Associates in 2006. This was the downtown Vision Plan. And to somewhat to the left of this site, this map, as you can orient yourself, you can see the large green area, that was a proposed Adams Green Project. From there, you move down to the right, going down Hancock Street, you see in yellow a number of proposed new buildings, whether they're on the Hancock Lot site, the Ross Garage area. And this plan actually went larger than the current Urban Renewal Plan. So it was a vision for the larger downtown area. Having done that, and there's a lot of community input into this, community meetings, community involvement, to develop this Vision Plan, and now that, the city said, okay, now that we have this vision, how come we step forward and start to implement some of these improvements to the downtown area? And more importantly, through the Urban Renewal Plan, break economic revitalization into the downtown area. So the Urban Renewal Plan focused on a smaller section of this larger vision area, and this was the first plan that was developed as part of the original Urban Renewal Plan. It was really focused on the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage area. So in this diagram, again, on the left, you can see the green trees, the Adams Green Area, just for reference, but as you move to the right, you'll see some oranger buildings, again, some of them clustered in the Hancock Lot area, talking about urban, their economic development opportunities there, as well as the Ross Garage area. Those being two city-owned properties that are controlled by the city that offer a lot of opportunity for redevelopment. The approach to the Urban Renewal Plan is public action that would then stimulate private investment. The thought was, public action in these areas to attract private investment into those areas would also translate to more investment throughout all of the downtown area, so it would not just be limited to those two areas. The Urban Renewal Plan was generated, and then Streetworks came on scene and expressed an interest in being a partner with the city and helping the city realize its vision for the downtown area. So Streetworks took the original plan, the Urban Renewal Plan, and expanded on it. So their actions still continue to focus on redevelopment opportunities on the Hancock Lot, as well as the Ross Garage area, took a broader approach to redevelopment and looked at other opportunities area, or opportunities areas of economic revitalization in downtown. So it was a more aggressive, much more comprehensive approach to revitalizing downtown. About this time, the city, again, because of their renewal plan, knew it had to start making some public utility, public infrastructure investments to set the stage for private investment in the area. And when this developer came on the scene, Streetworks, again, they kind of validated that original vision, but also validated the need for public investment in infrastructure. So things like the Concourse Roadway Project were proceeding to improve access in and around the downtown area. The relocation of Town Brook took place to remove that from some of the key redevelopment areas. Other utility and infrastructure improvements took place, again, for upgrades, as well as to consolidate and open up land for redevelopment. So as the Streetworks Plan was progressing, the city was also putting its money where its mouth is, so to speak, by making investments in the downtown area, really set the stage for private investment. As the Streetworks got involved with the project, there was a need for a couple other amendments to the original Urban Renewal Plan to really support the Streetworks' vision, which supported the city's vision for this area. So over the last ten years, there were two amendments to the Urban Renewal Plan, Amendment One and Amendment Two, which were, again, trying to address a number of issues that related to the Streetworks' development proposal, again, as a partner with them, hoping to support that more comprehensive revitalization downtown. Then, as you know, a little over a year ago, the city decided to part ways with Streetworks. The concession occurred during this timeframe, which obviously was very difficult across the country when it came to economic activities. The Streetworks were just not able to pull their program together, so the city parted ways with them. And at that point, hired the company Redgate to come in and, again, look at these areas and say, what is the economic reality of what could happen in downtown, especially with a focus on Hancock and Ross Garage areas? So Redgate produced a report, produced this plan, started that report, again, focusing on Hancock and Ross Garage, indicating that, based on current parking conditions, they saw the potential for residential development, office development, retail development, hotel development, and the need for public parking, which was indicated in the P, in the great P's, to support redevelopment in this area. That was then used as the basis to update the plan, which I'll get to in a minute. But also, as that plan is being updated, as you know, the T, the downtown T Station Garage was shut down for structural reasons. So that became a vacant piece of property, except for the T operations in the bottom end of the base. And earlier this year, as I'm sure many of you remember, there was an amendment that was drafted for you called Amendment Three, which expanded the original Urban Renewal Development Plan boundary to include the T Station area. And that was what this line is showing here, the expansion of the area as part of Amendment Three. And now we're recording tonight with Amendment Four, which shows this updated redevelopment plan for downtown. But if you remember the original plan, the original URDP, the number of slides earlier, this is very similar to what was originally proposed in support of the vision for redevelopment in downtown Quincy. So again, in the Hancock Lot area, right now, the development program for that is a little more fine-tuned, which I'll get into in a minute, because we have developers that have invested in property in that area, and developers who have come forward with development proposals for that area. In the Ross Garage area, we do not have that level of specificity yet, but we have identified through A, B, and C that there are still prime redevelopment opportunities in that area. As part of the amendment, it's a state department who needs to update certain plans, so as you look through the amendment, you may see a series of plans and wonder why they're in there. They're in there because the state requires them to be in there, and there are things such as proposed acquisition and demolition, talking about, again, key properties for acquisition and demolition. Many of these were included in the original Urban Renewal Plan. As you can see, the T Station has been added also. Talk about proposed parcels, again, we're talking about the Hancock Lot and Ross Garage going to private developers. We need to indicate what would be those new lot lines and what would define the boundaries of where new developers can come in and build within those areas. We need to talk about new streets, new drives, new access points, park parking, which is shown in dark gray, but we've also acknowledged the need for interim parking, which is in the hatched areas, because as the Hancock Lot comes offline, because development's taking place and construction staging is taking place, we still need to accommodate parking in the downtown area. There are still businesses and activities happening, so we have a plan for addressing that interim parking need as construction takes place before new parking garages come online. So again, all those elements are included in this plan, a little more diplomatic here. This focuses on the Hancock Lot area and talks about what's happening now, what's being proposed, and what the potential is for this area here. So D1 and D2 are two projects, as you know, that are under construction now. Clifton Place and West of Chestnut are under construction already. Within the Hancock Lot area themselves, developers have come forward, one for H1, which is a hotel, and one for R1, a residential tower. As Bill mentioned earlier, there are discussions with both developers now, with the hope that those negotiations will come together over the summer, and then Bill and his team will be coming back in the fall with the details of those land disposition agreements or LDAs. It shows P1, a large parking garage in the middle, to support all this development, and also shows R2 and R3, which have been identified as future development parcels, again, consistent with the Redgate Plan, so we see additional development happening in those areas, probably primarily residential, but we want to have a mix of retail and commercial in the area also. Again, you all can see the building's rising, but again, projects under construction, West of Chestnut, coming out of the ground, Clifton Place coming out of the ground. This is a rendition of that fifteen-story potential residential tower on the R1 Lot. This is an illustration of the proposed hotel. And one thing I want to point out on this particular, that illustration here, is between the new building on the right and the existing building on the left, you can see a glass atrium, we have made a very conscious effort and made it very clear to developers that any redevelopment in this area needs to include valuable public spaces. So this is a glass atrium that will serve as public access from Hancock Street into the area, kind of in the heart of the Hancock Lot, which will become a new pedestrian urban plaza, outdoor spaces for seating, for shopping, really kind of central core in that area. We see a similar approach for Ross Garage when that comes online down the road. So we're very conscious about the understanding that this is not only about private development and private buildings, it's also about public spaces and residents and people having a place to go, feel comfortable, congregate, and enjoy the new investment in downtown. Obviously, all this comes with a cost, so now I'm going to turn over to Craig to talk about that part of it.
Good evening. I'm Craig Seymour, President and Managing Director of RKG Associates. We are a real estate economics and planning firm, economic development firm, been involved in downtown Quincy since 2005, original urban planning plan that came forward. We were asked by the city to come in and assist in understanding the economics and financing necessary behind it. We've been involved since that time, not only with the Urban Renewal Plan, but also with various pieces, go into the funding of that, where it's a bit funding upon in IQ and some of the other projects. We are so vested here, we actually put an office down in here, which I can see by window across the cemetery from it, so we are, have a little bit of ownership in this because it is our town's wealth. The urban redevelopment plan has to have, as part of the state approval, a financing strategy, which really is, it looks at the sources and uses of funds. It looks at the costs of the various projects that go into it, and then it looks at the kind of revenues that are available in order to make it happen. In this case, what we're looking at, as been mentioned by Jeff and by Bill, is the enabling infrastructure. This is the foundation on which, funded by public investments from various sources, on which private investment will come in and begin to transform downtown Quincy, as you see it starting to happen now. The projects that are completed, therefore, have been underway, Concourse Adams Green, eighty million dollars' worth of investment, the Town Brook, absolutely necessary in order for this vision to be created. The upcoming projects, which is really the focus of Amendment Four, are the new public parking garages necessary in support for the existing businesses and uses here and new development and residences that have come. Cadreous plazas, the new streets and roadways, sidewalk improvements, and the Hancock Lot sewer line and utilities that have to be moved and relocated within the Hancock Lot in order to accommodate the development plan to move forward. From a budget perspective, from the cost side, we're looking at about $134 to $140 million's worth of infrastructure costs and related costs, including property acquisitions necessary to create the parcels on which the private investment can take place, and relocation expenses for any businesses. These are estimates only, based upon the experience the city's had over the years in doing downtown redevelopment, as well as on the latest plan and what's necessary to do that. There's demolition costs of about six million for the Ross Garage and some demolitions, buildings and infrastructure at the Hancock Lot. The public infrastructure in streets, sidewalks, streetscapes and those types of things, and utilities, I think, total is about forty-four million. The parking garages themselves, being the one in the first one in the Hancock Lot, and one or two more in the Ross area, we've estimated about fifty-seven million. And then other costs, which are the soft costs, the planning and those types of things that go along with this, total of about $134 million. The funding sources for that are varied. There are grants, state grants, if you're aware of it. The city had just received a $5.8 million Mass Works grant to begin the demolition of the Ross Garage and create interim parking there. A project we've worked on for the past several years, as the city has been authorized in preliminary approval process, were up to forty million dollars in IQ funding. The IQ program is where the state provides a grant based on bonding that they do, and that's repaid on employment taxes and sales taxes that are net new in the Commonwealth. So it's not moving it from around the state, it's net new based on the kind of growth that Quincy is experiencing and the other gateways that are experiencing as we go forward. We are posting to the sale of the assets, and what have been a difference between Quincy from other cities attempting to do downtown redevelopment, is that you are a player, you own the major, this is a real estate, which is why you can become this, I think, the master developer, like all the master coordinating developer, and can have a say in what happens, rather than reacting, you can proact because you have an investment here. So we have sales from those lots as it progresses, as the improvements are made, as the infrastructure is created, value is added to that problem. And then bond financing, we're focusing here, and we're going to talk a little bit about district improvement financing, the DIF program. And there's a refunding of existing bonds that have been taken out and money spent on that infrastructure in support of downtown development of forty million, and at least two, possibly more, additional bonds, as we call them, tranches in the financing of this business, that will become a loan, continuing to help pay for it. There's other revenue sources that we haven't included in this strategy. We include general occupation, parking revenues, as well as other grants and sources of funding. With the MBTA garage now included, we've amended it free, there's a very strong probability that there's some federal funding will come forward that will help with some of those costs, as well as additional state grant numbers. So all together, it's totals of about $158 million identified, possibly more in terms of sources of funding available. in terms of sources of funding available to carry out $130, $140 million involved with the identified infrastructure. The district improvement financing program, or DIF, a little bit of history and a little background on that. It was authorized before Q. It's tax increment financing, not to be confused with the TIF program in Commonwealth. Everywhere else in the country, taxing of financing is called TIF. Here we call it DIF because we already had a TIF program, which is really a tax abatement program, which is a separate issue. But what this does is takes, as new value and new tax base is created, the tax revenues from that new investment is used to fund the enabling infrastructure necessary to attract that private investment, that private tax base comes into account. This was authorized by the city council back in fiscal year 2005. I actually started talking about it in 2004 at the same time of the planning and vision plan. It is a way of funding for all of this. FY 2006 is the base year. And I mentioned that is where the point of increment, new investment, in the downtown district, the DIF district is created, works off of, and I'll show you that in just a minute. The taxes from that base year, and it actually increases to, it plays in the future, continue to flow into the general fund. So there's a growing revenue stream from that base assessment. And the DIF funding comes from the new investment increment on top of that. The DIF district differs from the URDP area, the urban compact area, and it reflects the vision plan that looked at downtown Quincy and looked at all the changes that are taking place within that and captures that kind of vision and involves that vision for the future. So it's bigger, it stretches out, and it captures properties that may not be right in the downtown but are still benefiting from the redevelopment of downtown Quincy. I couldn't show you the model here without putting you all safe very quickly because it's a very complex financial model that we started building back in 2005 to describe and to accurately forecast the changes that are going to take place. So the city will have a good, solid understanding at any given point in time of where the money's coming in and where the money can go. It's based upon the assessor's database, so that we have every property within the greater downtown area is included in that. And starting in fiscal year 2006, we have worked very, very closely with the assessor's office and continue to work closely so that every year, those parcels, if they change, as valuations change, assessments change, sometimes they get put together, sometimes they get split, it's reflected in this database, so it's always as accurate as possible in terms of understanding the true boundary. And that is just a sample, you can see it better on the monitors, of the actual properties that are included within that assessment database. You'll notice it goes over column AL, so there's 30-plus columns of information. And right now, as of fiscal year 2016, there's 306 individual parcels within that database. That is then taken through our model and summarized by type of use and the status of that use. There's commercial properties, there's residential properties, sometimes there's taxes and property. Now, I also subtract this year by year so we can understand the changes that are taking place. The DIF district in downtown, start to talk here about what's the change in thinking. But since 2006, the base tax base, taxable assessment, total assessed value within the DIF district was just under $300 million. That grew over time and has grown over time, so that in 2015, it's at $363.5 million. That's a 22% increase in the base value within the district. Not including any new investments coming in, they're really beginning this year for the first time. That's important because that's more than just the rate of inflation. What's happening with the vision plan and steps that the city is taking, the investments the city has made, the value of the property in downtown, we advise you as people are looking at downtown Quincy as a place to live, work, and to invest. Currently, it's about $400 million. And the DIF revenue coming from that, right now, it's about $2.7 million a year. As we move forward in time, the downtown investment's going to add over $400 million in taxable assessed value to the tax rolls. To illustrate that, this is a forecast of just the new tax incremental, new tax assessment within the downtown DIF district. You see in 2016, it's just under $50 million. Much of that's represented by the assessed value to date on West of Chestnut, some of the other properties that are out of the ground or rising in the downtown. But you see how in the blue section, that's the residential tax base we forecasted. And it's a forecast based upon the existing projects that are proposed moving forward, as well as working with BSC, our best vision of what can be created in those sites that are shown on the map. Commercial, you'll see, which is the orange, starts small. And remember though, retail and office goes to where people live, their place, their labor force, and that will fall, but it does fall here and becomes a significant part of the overall tax base. And remember here, this is the increment that goes into the DIF. The base assessment that's here remains, and those tax revenues, significant tax revenues continue to flow into the general fund. And to illustrate that, here is a bar chart that shows the base and the new assessment. The blue and the gray colors are the existing base assessments here in the DIF district now. The blue being the residential, which is a small portion of it. The gray being the commercial totals a little bit over $300 million, as I mentioned before. That's in 2006. In 2016, that base has increased to $350 million between the two of them, while new investment on top of that, the DIF increment, which is the orange and the yellow, has grown beyond that, making it up to new $500 million, $400 million dollars. By 20, it's doubled. It's assessed within the DIF district, that's essentially doubled since 2006 in the older portions. By 2034, which is our forecast here for the third year DIF program, we talked about third year's one 2006 level. You'll notice that that amount, the existing base value here, has been more than doubled again. And you'll see that the proportion is basing things to grow, the revenue flowing to the general fund, and the increment, the DIF increment, has grown significantly, made up of a lot of residential and a lot of office and retail space as well. From that assessment, there's a forecast based upon existing tax rates could change in time, and if tax rates change over time, this is the tax revenue from incremental amount of growth that's taken place, the DIF revenue. Right now, as I mentioned before, it's a little over $2 million a year, and it grows over time. The spikes you see in that are the results of the sale of the property that the city owns and invests in, and then it continues up to be over $12 million a year. That DIF revenue can go to support a variety of different uses, including debt service on DIF bonding. That is discussed in terms of source of revenue. It can also be used for direct investment in projects in the infrastructure. And it is not needed to support that growth, and it can return back into the general fund. And by the time we get out to 2026, 2027, and there's over $10 million in DIF revenue, by that time, there's a significant portion of that won't be needed for debt service or for projects or for administration of the program. And much of that will be going back into the general fund, in addition to the revenues that are being collected on the base as we go forward. Last slide here is to look at just kind of the space that we're talking about. We're estimating close to 600,000 square feet of retail and office space. About 1,700 residential units. And again, these are estimates, and these are just forecasts based upon the land use, contractual land use plans that we put together, 200 hotel rooms, plus or minus. But more importantly, we've gotten nearly 2,000 permanent jobs as a result of this investment, the city's investment in downtown Quincy. Construction jobs, hundreds of construction jobs go on the infrastructure side, as well as on the building trade side as the vertical development goes up. Once the horizontal infrastructure development is guided by the city. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Bill to wrap up. He can question you.
I'd like to share a quick point of order here.
I just want to, again, my own confusion in this matter, there really is no public, this is not a public hearing related to this. This is a meeting of the ordinance committee and the downtown committee. The date of the public meeting will be when, because there's some votes here, we're anticipating a public meeting.
June 20.
June 20. If I've contributed to that confusion in any way, I apologize. But again, I was under the impression that that was public hearing this evening. So the public hearing will actually be June 20. Yeah, what time, Madam Chair?
Just trying to give that up.
Six.
Just to give that to all of those in the audience, we have, so 6:00 PM is going to be the scheduled public hearing on June 20. And at that time, we'll be welcoming public comments. So this is a facilitated discussion. We are not voting this matter tonight. It will remain open. It was just a matter of the time of this coming in, the advertising, as far as when we could skip the meeting next week, we're tied up with graduations budget. So that was hence the reason that this slide gave typically the open and public hearing and presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And also for the council's information and the public's information, the planning board will also be taking this matter up at its next meeting on Wednesday evening, noon, eight. So we look forward to the public hearing on the 20th for receiving public commentary at that time. And this evening, we thought it was, as I said in my introduction, important for us to bring the council up to date on both the history as well as the mechanics, particularly the financing mechanics for the urban revitalization efforts going forward. With that, we have the two experts and in many ways, the architects of this plan present. We also have additional staff, Rob Stevens, who I know you're all familiar with. He's also been, was present at the beginning as well. He's been the downtown planner at the planning department for 10 years working on this. And we have staff from Woodburn Current, who have been the consulting engineers on the overall of the infrastructure work that has taken place thus far and is anticipated to take place in reference of this plan. So with that, Madam Chair, our questions and counselors, they're all available to respond to.
Councilwoman.
Is the presentation helpful?
Yes.
Okay. I just had a quick question about the June meeting. What is the planning board, do we have the meeting on June 8?
I'll defer to Mr. Bassett.
The planning board is going to take a look at URDP 4 and make a recommendation as to, you know, whether they feel that the URDP is acceptable to them. They're going to have an opportunity to review the plan. As you know, tonight is the first time that plan has revised, you know, is in the form that you'll see tonight. As Gary mentioned earlier, it has come to our attention that there will be a refinement to that plan as well. So they will take and have an opportunity to discuss the plan at the planning board meeting this Wednesday.
So that's their opportunity. I mean, in order for the URDP to become effective, it has to be approved by both the planning board and this is.
That's correct.
So I guess what I want to understand better is the interrelation of these two different bodies, you know, the council and the planning board, who both have a role in approving URDP. So they're going to vote on the same thing that we're looking at tonight. They're going to vote on that on the 8th. Then it's going to come back to us on the 20th. And at that point, the planning board will have already voted on it. If we change it in any way, at that point, voted up, voted down, amend something, it would then require, it would then be required that it goes back to the planning board, right? I mean, it's not like in the legislation, there's a conference committee. House passes one version, Senate passes another version, goes to a conference committee, they send it back out, and then agree upon form. So I'm just wondering how, what's the timeline in terms of, we're getting a presentation tonight, we're not voting. Planning board votes on June 8th, and it comes back to us June 20th.
I see Mr. Heinz coming in over my shoulder. It is the intention that they will review and take a look at this plan. It depends on, you know, they've had an opportunity to see the drafts as we've gone forward. They are going to take a look. They may choose to vote. That could be their prerogative on Wednesday night. It would not be a problem if this body decided that URDP 4 is not acceptable to this body, then we'd be back to the drawing room.
I did want to add just one step to that.
You are correct.
If there's significant change that comes out of council after this planning board hearing, if significant, as in to substantive matters, it would be referred back to the planning board. Because there is a statutory process that is set forth by the state. It's the planning agency creates the plan, presents the planning board in assistance for its recommendations. Then it comes to the council for approval. The council and the mayor are not the final step. None of this becomes effective until it's passed and approved by the PHTD and state level.
No, I understand that, but, come back up, don't run away. Yeah, you did, you had more information, but so, I'm just concerned about the timing. Not concerned, I'm just, I'm curious as to the timing of the way that works with the planning board and the city council, because we have to vote on the same thing. The two bodies have to vote on the same thing ultimately.
Correct, right. If there's significant deviation, it would be referred back.
Okay. Who determines if there's significant deviation?
Oh, the city's legislature. And if need be, with guidance from the PHTD and state level.
Okay. To see whether or not the two approvals are good enough for them.
It is the elected objectors in the state.
I'm just curious, I mean, just curious in terms of timeline moving forward, how, how are we doing? What the path forward is to getting this done. I think, and I'm not speaking myself, but I'll take a great liberty to say it. I think everybody in this body wants to move forward with development downtown and want to make sure we get it right. And given what we've been told about the timeline in terms of when the administration wants this URDP to be buttoned up, for lack of a better word, we're becoming constrained. It's becoming constrained, thank you. I didn't know what the question is for right now, but if you want to talk, I mean.
I just want to add one thing. The planning board continues to meet during the summer recess period of the city council. So the opportunity, should the council come back with a significant difference, the planning board could take it up again at a later meeting, all right? So they are not constrained by the summer recess.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have other questions, but I'll try not to monopolize the time, so I'll yield back to you and come back on later.
Would it be helpful if we invite the planning board to our next meeting on the 20th? So if they're there for that, would we do a joint meeting?
I'd be happy to invite and, you know, members that were able to participate. I have no problem with that at all, and I'd be happy to invite.
Do they have the authority to make amendments beyond ours?
I do have before you what I believe is Amendment 4.
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, it's a draft, so that's where we are. You know, so there is.
If you do want them to come back, it has to be public notice at the planning board meeting.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Councilman.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
Just had a couple of questions that, since the timeline was yesterday. Did a brief outline, I think I'm just looking for more clarity. I know you've been busy at work. I'll follow this. It's quite an undertaking. If you could, I was just on page 24, and I'll paraphrase all this because you don't have the money at the URDP. It speaks about, talks about the Hancock Lot, roughly 525 spaces, now 600. now 600 new spaces later, and then it goes on the list, you know, roughly 536 residences, 77,000 square feet new commercial and retail, so 525 now versus 600 later, is that the anticipated build up for the garage for 600 spaces, it's new spaces, so does that mean on its own, or is that 600 plus 525?
Well, it's important to note that part of the reason we're before you, and you will hear from us later on, is to go to a much more specific plan with the folks that are our consultant on, on the garage, nothing is said in stone on this garage, so we're using these numbers illustrative at this point, there'll be discussion as to the specific number of spaces, the dimensions, the height, that's again what we're looking to move forward into that phase. What we've been able to do is have the engineering folks come in, talk about the actual site, what the challenges of the site are, where the infrastructure needs to be placed on that site, go forward, now we have to price it out and also complete the design, and that's the reason we're doing it before you for additional monies to actually design the garage. So we're, we're still in a preliminary stage, and at this stage, I would just, those numbers are, are, you know, general numbers, we've used for, we know it'll be no less than 600 spaces, there'll be an evolution to this garage as we get input back from the developers, from the design team, so not to worry yet about whether we're making, we have too many spaces or not.
I'm just, again, and I understand this, this whole conversation won't be an evolution, right?
Yes.
Considering.
Now, this is a fluid process.
No, I get that, I was just, again, going off the information that was dropped off to me to digest and re-yield a little bit, and so it says 600, so I just looked at some clarity, as you know, because we spoke many times, there's, you know, the issues in the city are traffic and parking, parking and traffic, you can take either one of those variables either way, you know, I know the folks representing part of the periphery of downtown, when it comes to parking, would rather have it than not need it, than need it and not have it, right? Because the worst thing you could do is build a world-class destination and be on the park, that's right, so.
But, and, as you know, there is a intricate relationship between parking throughout the entire downtown, and as you know, very shortly we're going to be taking the Ross lot down, the garage down, there'll be an inch, as you saw earlier, an interim parking plan, but what we like to talk about the URDP, it's a map, it's a, it's, it is basically a document that guides us in a direction, it is not, it's not hung up on specifics, because we realize that we need to be fluid, we need to be able to adjust to the other utilizations on that site, on the Hancock site, so at this stage of the game, what we've done is we've put out a Y number, if you will, and it will be refined as we go forward.
No, I can certainly appreciate that, it's just what had grabbed my attention, I believe, and I paraphrased in one of the words, and I comes to Gary's mouth, but when he had said at the beginning, you know, the ask of the council, the council was essentially for another million dollars in debt financing, some of which will be used to further advance the ball down the field from consultancy standpoint, but also to really hone in on the parking situation.
Correct.
Relates to the garage, so what my mind says is, okay, I've seen a hard number of 600, I didn't know it was fluid, and now I hear you're asking for an authorization, so are we authorizing that with 600 mind, or?
Well, we're, we're authorizing them to kind of, we feel 600 is a number, you know, as I said, it won't be less than 600 spaces, it's a play saver until such time that we can get those professionals that will look at parking in a, in a professional manner, tell us what to expect in the, in the Hancock area, and all the issues, you know, the spaces that were there, to support the businesses that were there, the additional residential and future retail will all be taken into consideration, and the monies that we will, that we're requesting will allow professional parking design to occur.
So that, that just kind of brings me to the note on the same page of the URDP, which basically talks about a phasing plan to provide adequate interim parking spaces while the current parking numbers lots are not available for public use.
Yes.
What's the rule of on that?
Well, you're seeing it as we speak, the, seeing the property, if you've driven by it, it's been modified today. Yeah, so it's, it's being prepared for interim parking, once the Ross garage comes down, there will be additional parking, surface parking on that site, there have been any number of other asks, if you will, we've spoken to the county to utilize the Fordhouse parking area nights and weekends as interim parking, so there's a series of, there's also a few other small satellite lots that we're proposing, so that is also part of what the professional parking consultants will help us understand how to best satisfy those needs in the interim. It's been an experience even the last week or so, learning exactly, you know, whether we moved too many folks over to the Hancock lot, where our observations are that everybody was very beautiful and moved over, now we're starting to see some excess capacity at the Ross area, so this is a fluid plan, it's a work in progress, and we're going to rely on professional parking engineers to help us with that project.
I bet that they would assume it would, and again, I'm not even an office, just a regular guy who goes to work every day.
We're becoming more expert, the more we learn, the more we need to, we need to adjust the plan, so it's been very helpful, and I will tell you that the folks, including the current and the parking department at the U.S., they've been right on top of this, they are paying attention to daily counts, daily observations in the parking areas, and they will continue to do so as we go forward.
No, I can see that, sure, it's a pro, one, just, and I don't want to monopolize the time, but I know the other council will be asking questions there, but one of the things that I flagged in my homework here was, in the URDP, it talked about the acquisition of six properties, and then the presentation evening, it looks like, and it could be reading it's wrong, so the massing of our classification, it looks like it'll be the acquisition of four properties.
The, the properties, going back to the original vision, there have always been a number of properties contemplated for possible acquisition, I prefer to leave it at possible acquisitions at this time, until such time we have, you know, identified them, and, you know, they've, they've been there, they've been in URDPs in the past, you know, there will be discussions as we go forward on the, you know, the acquisition of properties to facilitate the, the planning, the development plan, so, you know, we're, we're not stating that we're taking all those properties, but they've been identified for possible acquisition.
And I understand that, I'm assuming too, that you're coming to some sort of price for potential acquisition.
Yes.
I mean, I saw that there was some sort of algorithm that we got.
We, we've, we've, we've put out numbers as far as what we believe the general number will be of that position and relocation, that's all was on, space savers, when we go to, you know, more developed plans, then of course those numbers will be defined through appraisal, and of course relocation costs will be considered at that time, if we've identified what we're taking, if we're taking them, again, I'd rather say acquisition, because we haven't had that conversation.
Sure, got that. 2.7 million, 2.7 million dollars in revenue being generated from the debt right now?
Yes, that's what I gave you, gave us as a number.
What is that versus, so obviously right now our note is, what, 40 million advanced?
40 million advanced, which is approximately, again, 400 and change in, in interest.
That's what we're paying on the interest.
That's what we're paying, the interest, oh yes, more than that.
Sounds like it. One final question here, just in terms of the IQ, and I know that this is all market-driven, right, I mean, I think one of the presenters spoke about it this evening, right now, everyone can see that the hot market's a residential, and typically what falls behind that is commercial, but, you know, obviously we've been, we've been talking about the private bodies, speaking of potential for IQ financing, and everywhere, you know, in the chamber, for lack of a better word, we have to prove our merit, right, in terms of net new commercial growth.
Correct.
We're basing a lot of this on our ability to secure that fund, right?
No.
What, 40 million?
Well, when you're, when you're talking, we've been authorized.
Correct.
To utilize IQ monies, which is significant, but with the authorization becomes, you know, the amount in which you compute that, and again, you get on, that is driven by commercial development and jobs, not just construction jobs, this is, you know, full-time jobs, the commercial side is what's going to drive that, there is, as I recall the slide, talks about other sources of financing, that's where IQ falls, I would not, if we see us using IQ in the next few years, it would be significantly early until there's commercial development, again, IQ, like anything else, the authorization is for 40 million dollars, we would incrementally go after that money, as there was the supporting revenue from the tax base to support that, that garment, so that's just one of the many ways that we will go forward, as you know, when we started off with this plan, we were hopeful that we would be able to reach or receive state and federal funding, the exhibited participation by the city and the development that has occurred has been very, very congruent to the process, and we would hope that again, we'll be able to take advantage of state and federal monies as they become aware, excuse me, become available, but that's the same thing with IQ, it's a great hurdle, I think the reason Mr. Seymour mentioned IQ, he was involved in our IQ application, to make sure that projections were there, you could speak to, you know, the specifics of what people take, but that's, that's not a short-term funding source, and that we should put out.
It seems like every time it's been presented, and has been later, in terms of this financial plan, and we hope that the market at that point supports the net new commercial growth that we keep, because I mean, the way I see it is, if you don't have the growth, you're not getting the money.
That's correct.
It's that simple, and if you don't have the growth and you're not getting the money, then you're out of some kind of financial support.
And if you haven't qualified and gone through the steps that we went through to secure the opportunity to receive IQ monies, then you're not even in the game, so that's really our, our suggestion tonight, because that's another source that we would hope to be able to take advantage as the commercial build up became more viable, and we got more commercial buildings and, you know, properties, you know, up in the downtown, as, as you pointed out earlier, it's, there's a, there's a game plan, you start off with residential, and it's followed by commercial, and so if we've never anticipated on the front end, we could get that, that IQ on the front end.
I'm just trying, I'm understanding, totally, yeah. One final question, if I could, so that comes, one final question, just as I read through here, it talks about the city coming up with parking strategies and implementation plan for the Hancock lot, my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, when we get into public disposition, first parcel we're going to look at is the Hancock lot.
Yes.
So we're thinking about parking strategies and implementation plan, which I would assume would nail down that parking number at that point in time, am I to assume that that'll be buttoned up, where you can talk about disposition on that property?
That is our intention, we, you know, the folks that we've speak to on development in the Hancock lot are very interested, as you can imagine, in forcing and helping out the area of the city, to understand what the parking plan is, and again, as we've gone through this, this plan, it'd be great if we had a lot of money and we could just go up there and, you know, engage a parking engineer and go forward, but there were steps that were required, understanding the engineering, understanding the site, understanding, even though the town road itself has been moved, there still is an area, the, the old town road needs to be dealt with, and they, there also has to be some major sewer infrastructure built into that Hancock lot, so we needed to understand where they would go before we could actually sit down with the parking engineers and give them what the outlook looks like. We've been able to do that preliminary work as to where we believe the underground infrastructure should go, and that we need to mitigate the old town road, so we're at this stage now where it is time to engage the, a real parking, you know, design, and that's probably before we.
I think some of those folks also that could potentially be part of that public disposition.
Excuse me?
Some of those parcels that could potentially be part of the public made disposition on that property, wouldn't some of them also self-park?
Yes.
That would be additional parking?
Absolutely, and this, and, as some of you received the Redgate land, the R2 and R3 parcels were always suggested to park themselves, so that is anticipated, so when you hear a number thrown out such as 600, that isn't the only parking that is anticipated on the site.
Thank you.
The other two, excuse me, residential projects, it's always been anticipated that they would park themselves.
Thank you very much for the, for the time, and I always appreciate you.
Councilwoman G.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chairman Person. Why I'm slipping. Again, first and foremost, I'm sitting here this evening marveling at the fact that faith is a tremendous thing, and I'm one of the people that's been alluded to, perhaps, that's been here through it all, and one of the things before I say anything else, my faith in the basic direction of where we're trying to go remains unshaken, quite honestly, in many regards, that I think that, you know, I've sat, had the honor of sitting with two different mayors, both of whom I think deserve a great deal of credit, because what they're trying to do, something that hadn't been done in a long time, and just to move from the conceptual to trying to create something in real space and time, and I think what we know is, doing that is never easy, that it's messy, and that it involves long haul, and in many respects, I felt it's always been a great honor to be engaged with this particular body that has played critical roles at various points in moving this forward, including the crafting of the land disposition agreement that, again, I think served the city and the citizens of Quincy so well, although none of us were hoping for the outcome we had, we had it, but the truth is, is that the preparation and the work had been done through the full vetting that occurred, I think, quite honestly, here as well, and that we took the time and we had that discussion, and so I think it's very important, as I speak to my colleagues here this evening, you recognize that we only have so many opportunities to influence the direction of this plan, quite honestly, we live in a strong mayor model of government, one that's a model which most of us embrace. We live in a strong mayor model of government, one that's a model which most of us embrace. But it's very important that we take opportunities such as this, make certain that if we have an issue or if there's a matter that concerns us, or if that we feel, um, the citizens are being misrepresented in some way by this particular plan, or whatever, use the time to make certain that we speak up. And I know we're gonna be having a public hearing and we'll probably have, uh, further, uh, discussion as we go along. But I, but I wanted to make that clear. I was not ashamed, uh, not embarrassed, uh, despite certain voices that were quite pessimistic, pessimistic and negative at times about the direction of this, uh, to be able to defend it in a very public manner and in a public setting. And again, part of the reason was because I was a part of it and the city council was a part of this. And I believe that the citizens of Quincy in many ways were really a part of this. And, um, so anything in, in terms of the decisions I do for, I mean, one key thing from my perspective is that, to keep that in mind, but this is your opportunity to ask the questions that need to be asked in relation to this. And I say, and with that, I guess I would turn to Mr. Gary or to Mr. Fatsis, either at this point. But from the perspective of the Commonwealth and from the Department of Housing and Community Development, what, why do we have these URDPs? What's their fundamental purpose of function?
It's to provide a map. And that is what we've taken a more incremental view of this. I think the first go around, uh, when Street Works was the master developer, you know, we received their information, received their presentation, and we went forward, um, with the faith that they were going to be able to produce an, an outcome that we'd all be very satisfied with. Fortunately, as we know, Street Works, uh, was not able to maintain the financial stability perceived, which really took us back to an earlier stage. And so what we had to do is go back to the redevelopment documentation and again, walk through the steps, which is, I think, why we think in a much more, um, deliberate process bringing in URDP because we thought it was important to bring the T station in. I think Bill mentioned earlier, uh, and again, I don't want to use mortal weapon to speak himself, but I think it's become apparent to us that the city, uh, did not have in-house expertise. So we've been able to go out and engage outside expertise right along. And, uh, in engineering, we intend to continue to do garage design. We've been able to speak to urban economic planners that have showed us, okay, it's nice to think it's all gonna work out, this is what it's gonna take, and this is what we've seen the DIF do over a period of time. Council of Alexandria, every fact, said, you know, what's the difference between, you know, just inflation and in fact, what have our actions, in the council, the city, the mayor, what actions have we taken to actually make it easy for outside investors to come to our city, put their money down and basically make an educated guess or an educated bet on the property? And, uh, as you pointed out, you've been here a long time, the council and the mayors have had to go forward and go in front to create the east-west connection, it was huge. To move the town road was huge. That's what the DIF did on a lot of those opportunities.
I, I, I get that part of it, I get the plan, the roadmap aspect of it, but I guess I'm really more interested, so we understand, and Mr. Heinz has pointed out that this amendment needs to be approved by DHC D.
Yes.
So essentially, the state basically has some part to play in this, a role to play in this. And I, I guess through this process, they're trying to protect certain policy or, or issues. And I guess, can somebody expand on that a little bit for me in terms of what that, that, why, you know, that is?
Bring the URDP up with that, Chair.
Question we get a lot, urban renewal program in the state of Massachusetts gives redevelopment authorities or other entities within communities to distribute to, in Spanish. The ability to basically act like a developer to facilitate economic development. So, without this plan in place, you have limitations on what you can do with property you own and how you can negotiate sale or development that way, private development. Those powers don't exist from municipalities unless there's something like an urban renewal plan in place. If you wanna acquire property for a park or for a street, you're allowed to do that right now. If you want to RFP property for sale, if you own property, if you want to RFP it, you can do that. Through an urban renewal plan, provided it's prepared property and approved by the state, you then, as was mentioned earlier, you almost become like the master developer or the coordinator because you are then given the ability to negotiate with private entities for certain economic development activities within that defined area that normally you would not be able to undertake.
And here in the city of Quincy, the, the, the agency or the instrument that's doing is basically planning and community development. That is particularly, as, as the planning agency, they are acting essentially as a development authority.
Correct. Now, when I think Quincy is a big community compared to other redevelopment authorities I worked with because they have certain defined actions and powers that they can do. In Quincy, I believe, there's the planning and development office, but there's also obviously a very engaged part of it, some council part of it.
That is correct. The fundamental purpose for urban revitalization plans, as Jeff referenced it and Jim before, is to assist communities in undertaking redevelopment because they don't have the inherent authority to do so.
Right.
Communities like the city of Boston and Cambridge, they have redevelopment authorities, that they're enabling statutes to allow them. Public policy is that the Commonwealth grants these communities these, uh, these powers only if they have a plan. If they have a plan that's been well thought out, well embedded with the public and legislative body, and the legislative body plays a role. So that's, that's the purpose. And communities that apply for these prospective powers do so because they see that they need the tools that will be available to them under that authority to inspire development where otherwise we wouldn't have development. Market forces aren't providing for that kind of development. So here in Quincy, we, we struggle with the challenge that anything we wanna build is essentially being priced now at Boston prices to build. But those, those structures, whether residential or commercial, aren't necessarily gonna yield the rents that Summingville and Cambridge and Boston can come in to offset their costs. So it provides incentives for these developments and the Commonwealth retains control, oversight, to approve or disapprove of, um, these ventures once the city has entered in.
So, if, if there were, which we don't have obviously, but if there were a redevelopment authority, but just, uh, the distinction, where redevelopment authorities exist, they have the power of a limited domain. So that's, in Boston, the city council would never be engaged in that aspect as much as the redevelopment authority.
That's correct.
So that's what makes it kind of unique here, whereas here, in terms of anything engaging independent domain, despite the city agency being charged as that development authority, you still are required to come back before the council and to acquire.
But, but as Jeff said, ordinarily, a community's, uh, independent authority is limited in scope in terms of for a public purpose, for a park, for a road, whereas having a URDP, one of the tools that the city acquires is that it thereby acquires independent authority to take property for economic development purposes itself.
Right, right.
And once again, irrespective of what the purpose is, the council still has the authority to approve the independent domain, and, and the appropriation, which underpins the, the purchase.
But it raises a good point, so we can understand the intersection of this URDP and what the authority, particularly of this body is. There's nothing that you're gonna come back and say later, that this URDP, because it identifies certain possibilities or possible acquisition, no way, in no way empowers you, the city, the agency, or mitigates the authority of the council. You just can't do that, to be back to come back.
That is absolutely correct. And as I said in my opening remarks, what differentiates the current plan that we're asking you to adopt from the prior plan is that you are deeply, you and the council are deeply involved in virtually every step of this process. And there's nothing that's contained within URDP amendment number four that authorizes us to take any concrete actions with respect to acquisitions. Um, it allows us to ready value of properties. It allows us, and I can't emphasize enough, the criticality of the parking garage. And you reference everything that Jim said in the sponsor, the council of coal, was accurate. But this is all interconnected, all interconnected.
Well, I think it's important to have that discussion without, I don't wanna drag up past history, but I was engaged in a, a city acquisition that was, I learned, this form was authorized by the passage of a specific bond. I still disagree with that interpretation, but I wanna be clear that if I vote later on to support this, that I'm not doing anything that, in a sense, mitigates or, or works against the basic authority of this body to have influence, particularly in those public parcels, as we, as we negotiate land disposition agreements.
Yes, the, the, the LDA is at disposition, it's public property, and the council has the authority to review and either approve or disapprove of that. And, and as a practical matter, since we're talking about, we're talking about public property, so virtually all of the prospective developments there is gonna involve an LDA of one sort or another.
So if we're talking, and again, in terms of URDP, what, because we've learned, you know, there's been a few terms here, you know, about not being hung up on specifics or different things, or, or this being a roadmap, different things. But in terms of just the project budgets and what's being laid out here, there seems to be certain presuppositions right from the start, but, uh, what, what level of, of, is it just a reasonable standard that they apply in terms of why they think how realistic the financing model is for DHC D to approve this? What level of specificity are they looking for in terms of that?
Well, I think they're looking for expertise, and that's why we have retained, um, the expertise that, uh, you saw this evening in terms of the presentations, particularly on the financing model. Mr. Seymour from RKG, uh, Mr. Seymour's a known quantity at DHC D.
But there's still a number of unknown factors in relation to this.
And, and, and planning is by its very nature an exercise in dealing with unknown factors. You plan for, for the best, prepare for the worst, uh, you, you try to be as flexible and nimble as possible in changing when you see conditions change. And in some respects, that's, um, the urgency that's driving us a little bit is having Seymour's courage in 2008. Now, you know, we, we've had a period of time where the economy has been good, but we don't know what external economic factors will, or are national, can, can change that. So that's why, um, the prospective developers are anxious in terms of getting an agreement with the city so that they can line up their financing, and if they can't line up their financing, until they have that agreement.
And, and believe me, I realize there are a sense of urgency if there's a problem with this, but having gone through the past experience with the land disposition agreement, one of the things that becomes quite apparent is that the devil's up in the details.
Yes.
In terms of ramifications, any type of deal has on the taxpayer of the city of Quincy, on, on the character of the downtown, any of those specific things. And, and so I'm just trying to get a sense of the level of specificity and is there anything within this urban, this URDP that's committing this council to any particular posture regarding the disposition of any of these specific properties?
No.
So for example, the fact that you've already identified as certain finance resources was, you know, proceeds from, uh, the sale of those assets, the Hancock and Ross. That shouldn't limit any discussion here if there's concerns about the finance model that you're bringing to this.
Correct.
And that.
Each is on a case-by-case basis?
Case-by-case basis. So, the feasibility for ground leases or those particular discussions, there's certainly gonna be additional discussion from the city's perspective or from the planning entity's perspective as to what makes, you know, the most sense under the circumstances.
Correct.
We're not, we've already reached the foregone conclusion that we're selling these assets at this point.
Well, we, this, this plan, there's been a vision, and the vision that has through the years, then, then the doors, and the plan's targets, certain areas that make sense for acquisition. And it doesn't mean that, um, for example, a private owner couldn't decide to develop on their private property.
No, right now I'm talking solely about the public.
The public.
And why, I mean, I'm very conscious of the fact is that, you know, not like my former colleague, Councilor Crawford, needing to remember these quotes, but I think it's Mark Twain, right? It says, um, "Properties got a lot of value because they're not making any more of it." I'm really concerned specifically in terms of what the best deal for the city of Quincy is. And I just wanna make certain that this doesn't set us only with it considering these things with any certain parameters. So, on the fine print, and they, forgive me for sounding negative, right, it's not the intent. But bottom line, on the fine print, there's a sense that that doesn't work. And to borrow the phrase, I think Mr. Fatsis used earlier, there's a need to send you back to the drawing board. And again, we're talking around the land disposition agreement. That is not, um, limited by this specifically at all, by the URDP.
It's not the, the, the council has the authority to approve or disapprove. The overall concept is that the Hancock lot today doesn't provide a lot of value to the city of Quincy. Doesn't provide any value to.
No, not, uh, not.
But that's, that's, that's what we're, we're talking about here. We've identified that it makes sense to develop that for higher and better uses than the use that we're.
No, I, I agree with that. I think more, I'm, I'm just concerned about the financing models or, or the, the models for disposition that come before us. And what interests, what, what retains those as, as serious assets.
The models that each group will be, by the package that comes before the council, whether to approve or disapprove.
I, I'm not gonna tire, but I do have some questions. And first off, I wanna thank you for, uh, you know, it, it's almost like the same task as the, you know, the, the, applying to the pentateuch or something in terms of trying to figure out all the various sources and, and how to make this make sense. And I, I think, again, the two copies was helpful. Oh, great. And, but I think that particularly when we get into the project budget, there's clearly discrepancies between the old and the new that would be helpful to have some of that discussion. Perhaps not even tonight, but, but as, as we continue, I'd be happy to ask those questions.
Good.
The final thing I have to say though is, one area that I'm not certain, and again, I, I participated in this as noted right from the beginning, and I was, what they call those large gatherings, the charrettes, all of these different things that were part of it, countless public hearings. But even as we moved and based on, you know, dealing with a master developer and kind of coming up with a single agreement and working things out, um, as it related to affordable housing, there was never any question that one of the key values and commitments to this process was the whole idea of creating affordable housing opportunities for the working families and people of the city of Quincy in some way. And, you know, again, um, that, there are certain choices made within the master, with the master developer around the way that he felt that that could best happen or be reinforced. developer around the way that is felt that that could best happen or be reinforced. But all through it all, in every plan to date, that there has been an articulation of the city of Quincy's commitment to affordable housing. And I guess what I want to make certain is, are we stepping back off of that commitment in some way? Has that been amended out of this URDP, or is it still considered to be of core value, so to speak?
I don't believe it's been amended, but I do believe there is an exemption in zoning sort of for the downtown urban redevelopment, this kind of, that predates my involvement, at least in this term, that is, you know, planning board. But the, like I said at one of the earlier meetings, we haven't reached the promised end yet. And I would tell you, in the six months that I've been doing this, this is very hard. It has not, it has not been easy, and I just, you know, concluded a complete career with a multi-billion dollar multinational corporation doing billion-dollar deals. Those deals are, were every bit as challenging as any of the deals we're negotiating right now for a variety of reasons. And investors, prospective developers who are investors in our downtown, they are nervous about the economics, for the reason I said a little bit earlier, in terms of what construction prices are, they will have to pay, and the payback of the investment that they make. And at this juncture, having seen the success of our affordable housing program, City Y, I don't know that we are in a position to make that a requirement for the first several developments that we're trying to get underway, and we hope to have underway before this autumn fall. But as to the city's commitment to affordable housing, I think the city has a tremendous commitment to affordable housing. That is an issue that, as chairman of the planning board, I did have occasion to review. Mr. Fatsy's now as the director, has opportunities to review that, and certainly, I know that the council wanted an update on that, and the administration could arrange an update.
I think that, you know, having been here the entire time and listened to various decisions unfolded over time, there was always a sense that, again, not that this was going to be the center component of the direction of where affordable housing would go, it would be part of the vision, but there had always been a sense that it would be integrated into the rest of what the city is doing in some way, and that this project, its goal and objective of engaging all the people in Quincy and granting opportunity in some way would be integrated and tied to affordable housing in some manner. Now, I've listened and I've heard relations, you know, discussions as to, you know, this being an economic disincentive, but when we look at cities all around us, they clearly ask far more, and, you know, your analysis might be right, since they're also getting much more in terms of markets, perhaps that they're attracting. But it seems to me that what's missing at this particular point is that there's a value being really stated in this in terms of how this is conceived to fit in with the idea of making certain that there's some level of affordability in the city. I mean, and I think it's important, we have to keep this clear, but we're talking about affordable housing, I'm looking at, Mr. Fatsy's here, but I think we're talking about the people roughly eighty percent to one hundred and ten percent of median income, we're really talking about working families. And when councillor Hanley in 2001 actually first passed that ordinance, that was always the objective. This isn't about Section 8s or housing reform or anything like this, it's about ensuring affordability for some of the people who actually live here. And there's a strong sense that that's been kind of left behind, that specific vision in relation to this particular redaction or amendment as it moves forward. And I'm just wondering, is there, again, given I, forgive me, but the gentleman who did the analysis for the Affordable Housing Trust, the member of, what we currently even do with affordable housing compared to what is actually, and this is, again, the planning department presented this, compared to what the developer makes off of those, each of those units is astronomical. I mean, that, and that's part of the big reason why developers want as few units as they possibly can have, because these are such money generators. But when you look at it within the larger picture, particularly here in Quincy with the development of the Affordable Housing Trust, there are ways of working around that and working with developers that protected their financial interests, but allowed them at the same time to be able to invest, invest in that vision that we fostered here in Quincy, unlike many other communities, that actually made resources available to be able to develop and move forward more of that, that type of affordable housing. Now, we're kind of left here with a view that the taxpayers of Quincy, many of them who are stressed, are being asked once again to support something of which ultimately they may ever have opportunity to fully benefit from. Whether we're talking about that elderly couple who could move into, who's on a fixed income, who could move into a unit, clean up perhaps other family property that they have, all of those things seem to be now deforsed from this. And I guess I'm just wondering why we can't take a little more vision in terms of moving this forward and not be simply held to this idea that somehow it's going to limit development? I mean, look at everything that's going up around us. I mean, they've all, developers have all been before the Affordable Housing Trust. It hasn't, certainly hasn't deterred them any. Why is it going to so much deter what happens here? Again, I just think that something has been lost that's significant in having moved away from this, and I'm hoping before it comes time to pass this, we can't really, you know, have some sense that really makes a clear statement of the city's commitment to the, to affordable housing.
Thank you, councillor Fenn, for your comments. As I'm looking at the time, I just wanted to look around the minutes and say that we've done what we've exceeded in Chicago, and catch your eye here.
You should have interrupted me earlier, man.
I kept saying he's going to finish his thought, and I thought, no. So I do want, you know, affordable housing is good, I think you're very passionate about it, so we're doing the Affordable Housing Trust order, and that's important to discussions to have. As we're looking at the time in our schedule this evening, who else I know, councillor Lee, I know councillor Palmoche and myself, I have questions, who are contemplating continuing this full hearing to follow the public hearing on June 20th. Or we could open it up tonight, we're inclined to continue until the 20th at this point.
Sorry, what?
So we need to recess for the SPGA, we need to recess for council, reopen this up related to this evening, or continue the entire matter to June 20th, following the public hearing on this matter scheduled for June 20th. I think it's important to have discussion after the public comments as well. And clearly, an hour and forty-five minutes wasn't sufficient timing for this matter. All right, so I think with that, we do have Mr. Shea available to come back with us on June 20th. I ask if the other members speaking this evening, the representatives from BSC and RKG, if you're available on June 20th, or seeing the bill from RKG. So do we want to have any questions specific for Mr. Seymour of RKG from this body, RKG? Councillor Kane? Or should we recess?
Just real quick, it'll take two seconds.
Okay.
I promise. It will, it will.
Two, two then?
Yeah. I'm curious about the comprehensive financial model, the one that you use with the assessed properties, can you make available to us?
I would be made available if it was planned.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I actually also had a question, very quick question on RKG, on the value of the Ross garage, so I did wait over this evening, but the assessment of the Ross garage, basically had that as a liability for this community, right? So it was, it was a negative value because of the structure and its conditions. Now that it's getting our grant from the state to do the demolition, what does that do to the value, the property value of the Ross garage for the city? Is that something we've looked at?
The property value of the Ross garage is dependent on what ultimately may be built there. And the underlying land value is dependent upon the types of uses that go there and their valuation at the time. Just also just to add to this perspective, you have BSC, you have RKG, you have Urban Recurrent, there are other experts involved in this process, that we've been in contact with. Pam McKinney from, McKinney has been involved since the beginning, and she and I have gone back and forth relative to these valuations. In fact, the numbers in our plan, which that comes from the market and the economic analysis that she was involved with, the red tape plan really brings it up there. And on the supply side, where the source of funding, we have been working very closely with Cinder McNamara from Southwest, the bond council effectively, to make sure that the numbers that are coming out will make sense from the bonding capacity issues. So we are vetting these numbers and these estimates as best we can so that they are the most reasonable assumptions moving forward.
I know that Pam was unable to join us this evening, we did invite her, but she should be available on June 20th, so we can answer the financial question.
Unfortunately, she is not available.
We asked for both this evening and the 20th.
She was out of state for both.
She's terrific, okay. That closing comment is councillor Palmoche, and then we will continue the matter.
Just for the record, when I yielded, I had, I had about six pages of questions, so let it, I didn't want it to be thought that that's all I had to say, that's all the questions that I had tonight. If we're not going to have the meeting tonight, you know, continue the meeting, that's fine, you know, do whatever we want, but I'll just say for the record, I'll be less positioned on the 20th to vote for approval after not having discussed it tonight and had my questions answered. I guess I'll try and reach out to people offline to get those answered, but just from this council's perspective, I'll be less inclined to adopt this after having one discussion on it. If you look at this, this is only the second time this has been before us, this whole new vision for downtown, where Quincy, the city of Quincy is a master developer, this is only the second time we received a presentation on it. The first time we've been able to speak on it, and we're, you know, we're behind the city council meeting. It's a difficult situation, and I think to expect that we're going to vote on this after having half a debate tonight and then one debate on it on the 20th is, I think, is short-sighted, but that's, that's my, you know, that's my perspective on it. I understand that we have a city council meeting, we have some other business that we have to attend to, so.
Thank you, councillor Palmoche. While we're going to continue the discussion to June 20th, that does not necessarily mean we're voting June 20th out of the committee, we have an opportunity as well to follow council meeting. So I think that's important today, and it is that we have scheduled the time to start the discussion, and everyone gets all their questions answered. And clearly, tonight, we're two hours in, and we're only halfway there, so with what else is on the agenda, I think it's important to continue this discussion. So with that, I call the meeting of the organizing committee adjourned.
As I understand, some language that council, for the city council, was asking you to be aware of that, in order to put that language in and amend the language of the URDP deal for you, it'd be helpful if that could be presented tonight and voted on by the council and accepted that language. Should go into URDP if that is postponed. That way we'll be able to prepare that document by the 20th.
But we're unadjourned, I suppose. So he's saying that the second, the second council order on the agenda is not going to trust, and that language needs to be adopted to incorporate?
Okay. Again, responding to councillor Shea's...
You know, I think the timing is right, because we can't eventually vote on this thing. I think we need to vote, because we...
Right, we don't need to. Okay. We will put it in.
What's proposed, I didn't, part of these...
Anyway. Just to take the mystery away from this, that, the, this is really in lieu of, this is actually some language you get councillor Liang as chairman, and we've been discussing, but working with council that, that as an alternative to my particular amendment that I was proposing, that they crafted some language that would define out more specifically what the role of the council is as it relates to the so-called urban redevelopment covenants. And that it's actually a language that in fact, actually last spring, to announce in terms of, we were discussing it, which really protects, I think, our role specifically as, as these contracts are entered into, if they require any utilization of public resources, that the council, indeed, does have the hope in relation to those specific issues. I think that's a fair, maybe not, this is a further one.
We have to review the language that we referred to in the draft, and we have to talk about
it with the administration and the planning folks, and we are comfortable with that, and so if that's your desire, we will include that language that we proposed into the draft of the URDP.
As long as you can confer, the chair of downtown, specifically, that she was a big part of the leadership in having some of this discussion to truly get to this point, that we can confirm that it is indeed the same language that we're...
I'll do, I'll reach out to councillor Liang, confirm this language, and we will include that in the meeting.
Absolutely, yes, thank you. I know that we're, in a rush, and I know that we're running late on things, so just to clarify to my colleagues sort of what we've been discussing here, going into the next meeting as well as to the viewers and the folks in the audience, so the second agenda item that was on there was to discuss the language related to the covenants, only the covenants, not the LDA's, not the ours, we started off with the covenants. After a lot of, you know, conversations with my colleagues, as well as, you know, talking to councillor Finn and councillor Palmoche for bringing this forward, you know, we were able to have Mary's office on the table as well, and we're about a solution that, you know, is not ideal, I think, for either side of us, but, you know, the purpose of it and the positive message to this is that the language that we're able to craft benefits the public, but benefits the residents at the end of the day. And so that language, again, if you can just forward it and send it out to my colleagues as well, to make sure that that's the final language that we've reached with the help of our councillor Shea. Again, I think that it accomplishes the goal that your vision set out to accomplish, which I'm very excited about, and I do want to thank the administration as well as my colleagues for helping craft that language. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, for your assistance in crafting it, and we will, we will include that in the metaphor draft, I think, of course.
Thank you, because I don't believe all of my colleagues received that by our language yet, so I wanted to make sure...
We will confirm to councillor Liang that we have the proper language, and then we'll have a certificate signed.
Thank you.
And that works in proper timing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. On that, you may adjourn.
All good. Seven.
Yeah. No, 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 this is.
At the line of the end, any credit. No, city money. Covenants have to have, city council approval on this, and this is more finance. Most of it's.
Someone's double back with you on that?
I said, Timmons, I was, um.
You weren't here, you came here a little bit late.
Excuse me?
I said, you came here a little bit late, but I was told I had to stand over here, that's why I'm in the aisle.
Yeah, I know, you were getting in the way of the shots from up there.
Well, it's all, it's all a little bit confusing, you know what I'm saying?
The new camera angles.
I wouldn't mind at some time, you know, maybe just going over some ground rules or trying to figure out something, you know what I mean?
There isn't really anything other than who gets on that side of the bar, which is supposed to be more restricted than it is. And then I would say sightlines, QA TV, other than that, you remember the public, that came in and set something up over there.
Mm-hmm.
He's over in the far side or something.
Well, I actually talked to someone from the ledger about doing some video, and then of course they sent someone else up and stuff, but I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I feel I'm just as important as QA TV, because more people have access to my stuff, and I personally myself, over the last six months, I've recorded more data of public meetings than they have as a public service.
All right, good evening, everyone. We are.
You're a good guy.
Back on record at 8:00 p.m. over here for the city council meeting, the Quincy City Council, Monday, June 6th, meeting here in the Gray Hall, and Madam Clark asks you if you can hold a little bit. President.
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 Thank you. I'd ask you all to stand and join me in moment silence.
Thank you.
For our members in the honor services here in the broad serving to confessing. I'm joining you in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clark, to be read the open meeting log. This is Madam Clark, our watch out the third meeting session 20, soon to open the meeting log. Any person may read an audio or video recording of the public meetings.
Or may transmit the meeting during the meeting. Attendees are therefore advised to discuss recordings of the meetings are being made when perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Clark. All right, at this time, we will recess the regular meeting and open up the special permit granting authority. And so I'm just going to go ahead and make that one, we'll just recess for a brief few moments, well, a little while anyway, and we can begin this SPGA. Back on record, as the special permit granting authority, Madam Clark, you will read the letter.
Yes. Special Granting Authority meeting, Monday, June 6th, 2016. The Quincy City Council acting in its capacity as the special permit granting authority will conduct a meeting in the Gray Hall, 1305 Hayward Street to review C-Mark application from development of 10-40 Hayward Street, number 2013-015. Everybody has got a copy of this, and it's, our city solicitor chief Timmons is here to make the presentation. Before it does that so, I would like to call a roll. So President, I'm sorry, Council Crowe. Council Finn.
President.
Council LaFars.
President.
Council Calmuji.
President.
President Hughes.
President.
We got five members.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Solicitor, how are you?
Evening, Madam President, now Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm prepared to make a presentation if it's agreeable that I simply proceed.
It is. Could I, I think folks might be confused as to why only five councils were called in the hall.
I was going to begin with that.
Great, thank you, very well.
All right. Prior to getting into the merits of why we're here tonight, I was going to go over a couple of items, first of which is somewhat the ground rules and the process. You are now convened as a permit granting authority, which is essentially adjudicatory. Under chapter 4A, you can only vote as a member of a permit granting authority if you attend all the hearings that are held relative to the application on which you'd be voting. Well, several members of the council were not even members of the council at the time that this matter began and actually came to an end. Councilor DeBona, Councilor Kane, Councilor Harris, and Councilor Yang are all part of this year's council, but were not part of prior councils, so by law, they are barred from voting. There is a provision under the law that Council Calmuji asked me about. Under general law, chapter 39, section 23D, you may recall, I think some of you miss a meeting, what you can do is watch a tape of the meeting, and then you file an affidavit that's made part of the record, and then as a result of that, you're allowed to vote. Well, that applies generally to one, one meeting, but also it just simply couldn't be used here because we'd be going back in time four years and the volume of information. The fact also that we're here as a result of a remand by the land court. A land court judge adjudicated the permit question here. It was originally denied by this council, it was denied again on remand, and on further review, a land court judge has ordered that permit issued. So what is before you tonight, as part of his order, was that the city council could impose reasonable mitigation hydrants, and that's the sole issue before you tonight. We're not revisiting the entire matter, there's somewhat of a limited question before you. And as I represented to you back when I made the report of the judge's decision, what I was then going to do was meet with C-Mark representatives and representatives from the city, and Mr. Tramitose, a traffic engineer, one of the traffic engineers, I didn't use our, our new traffic engineer because she was not familiar with the project, Ms. Finney. But what I did do was work with Mr. Tramitose and the representatives of C-Mark, and we came up with a mitigation plan that's before you tonight. What I'd like to do is review that plan and then ask that you endorse that plan. I am prepared at the end of my presentation to recommend this to you. It's the result of a couple of meetings that we've had with C-Mark representatives, and it's an agreed upon plan, and it achieves what I think is really the only available mitigation of this site. So if that clarifies the issue of who can vote and what we're going to do, I'm happy to proceed. No further questions.
Any questions regarding anything the solicitors, yes, Council.
Thanks. Jim, we whispered about it a little bit before the meeting, and I expressed to you my concern about the Ward 6 counselor not voting yet again in this matter. So I just want to note that for the record, but also discuss that with you. This is the second time the case has been remanded. It was a remand, then there's this second remand, which is, we're on the second remand now. So I wasn't a part of the first hearing, but I was, I participated in the first remand process, and now I'm participating in the second remand process. So I guess what, I'd like to answer, what's the difference between, because if we follow that logic, that you had to attend all, what you said, attended all of the hearings, right? Only Council Finn would be allowed to vote tonight, because only Council Finn has seen this, and this is what, 2008? It's a 2008 order, I think originally came in, so only Council Finn has sat through all the hearings since 2008. So under that logic, you can be the only one to vote?
Well, the remand you're referencing is when the matter was reopened again and revisited. We went right back to square one.
But it wasn't, it wasn't a different filing, it was the same filing, just a new hearing on the same file.
Well, it may have been revised a bit, because I do recall that they did file a new application, and we did work on some of the issues there. The first remand, as you may recall, the judgment ordered that Council McNamie not participate, but there was clearly a second file, and I do recall that, because it took C-Mark a while to get their, their plans together for that second file. So the matter that ended up on appeal and is back here tonight on remand was a new matter that I believe the five members who I mentioned earlier all participated in.
Okay, that, I mean, that answers that, that question. I still feel extremely uncomfortable with proceeding, and know that we will, but I feel uncomfortable proceeding without having the Ward 6 representative participate. That's nothing against you, Council Harris, or specific to you, I, I said the same thing at the last remand, I was uncomfortable that the judge had ordered Council McNamie out. I mean, this is a project that affects the residents of Ward 6 significantly, and the whole system here of representation is that your ward counselors, your most direct representative. And I know you spoke to at least one resident today, because they called me, I think they spoke to Council Finn as well, because they wanted to be heard and have some say, and that to me just pointed out, I was already of this opinion, and that really just heightened my, my discomfort level with that they should be able to go to their ward counselor, the ward counselor is their voice at this point. Now granted, Council Finn is at large, so it's nice to see him do some work once in a while too, and you know, he can represent that interest tonight, but for me, it's just being a ward counselor, it's just, it's uncomfortable for me to have the ward counselor who is perhaps most directly, or residents who are most directly affected by this, and I know it's actually technically Ward 5, but for Ward 6 residents who are definite impacted by this, to not have their representative able to participate, that is not good, as I would say, you know, not good, Jim. I just, I'm not comfortable with it. And I just seem to have to do it. There is no way in which they could waive in by filing that notice if they did attend the hearings, or if they did watch the hearings?
Well, no, I mean, it's just, it's too much, this. I wouldn't be comfortable with that sort of process. And the point you're raising is a very valid one, and what you should understand, you may recall that, once he was ordered off the SPGA, Council McNamie did participate in the hearing as the ward counselor, get up and spoke against the project a second time. Councilor Harris, I have told him can participate as the ward counselor, and in fact has, by providing me with input, since he's taken office, about the concerns that you as a representative official in Ward Counsel would raise. So he has participated in the manner that I think you're addressing, he just won't be able to vote on the matter. So the interests of the ward, you know, to the extent we're able to, it's, this is a very limited thing for everyone tonight, have been represented by Councilor Harris since he's taken office. It was one of the first things he spoke with me about, and then as this has moved down the road, when we came up with the final package, I spoke with Councilor Harris and Councilor Hughes, the two ward counselors involved.
And I know that the administration too, it's not as if the mayor doesn't represent the folks of Ward 6 as well, but I just, I mean, you can see from my perspective, being a ward counselor, how seriously I take, I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, I threw you to Mr. Walker. All right, distracted. How seriously I take the responsibility of a ward counselor in doing the job of a ward counselor, and I would be, I'd be remiss in saying if I didn't raise it, perhaps even if it's not on his behalf, on behalf of the citizens that are in a way disenfranchised from the vote here tonight, but, but I'm glad to hear that he's participated in the council, he's participated in the mayor's office, and working with them, to address the residents of 6, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. With that, Madam Chair, I think you proceed with the presentation.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, Council.
Oh, I think you're part of the council.
Sorry, Council.
I, I'll yield until the presentation, I was ready to, and it's a question about the size of the scene, last words.
Oh, good, proceed.
I'll, I'll wait and be next to mine.
Thank you. For 7:8.
What's the question? I'm sorry.
I'm going to all my questions, wait until you come back, straight until you finish. Yes, proceed.
I'm going to begin by just reviewing the sole issue before you, which is traffic and traffic mitigation. What is on the screen here is a shot of the, the locus. That is the building that C-Mark intends to develop into a supermarket. This is the parking area behind it. Here is Hayward Street, and this is Hancock Street. As you go from right to left, you're heading north, left to right, you're heading south. On Hancock Street, there are some buildings that are but the site. This is where the, the sign company, take your pardon.
Modern.
Modern Art. Modern Art is located in this building, Wheelhouse Diner, two residential properties, and then there's a tire store, it's got two signs, Jimmy's and Hand &amp; Tire. Just taking a look at the street from that perspective, this is Hand &amp; Tire, and when you look from that perspective, northbound down Hancock Street, you can see, as you approach Hayward, to the right here, parking spaces, and this is the North Quincy parking lot, North Quincy Mail, the postal service building with a parking lot. There were parking spaces here that were a concern and dispute during the hearing. There's two. There's two lanes here and then as you get further down, you come to the intersection of Hancock and Hayward. Here it is, we're looking down Hayward now. And when you look down Hayward, you see the Wheelhouse Diner and then you see Granite Lofts, which are residential condominiums. This is the intersection that's in play. At the end of Hayward Street is the MTA site, the rail tracks, which essentially dissect the city, as you all know. Because of this location, there was very little that could be done in the way of mitigation. At Hannaford Site, which is just a little further south of this particular intersection, there is some traffic mitigation there, there's red light signalization. The red lights here at Hayward are what are called pedestrian actuated red lights, which means that they're basically blinking all day and if a pedestrian wishes to cross in this infrastructure here, they press the red light and it stops. The first automatic signals that you encounter if you're heading south, you went to the city at Billings Road, which is up that end. So what we did is we focused on this intersection during our meetings and we focused on how to make this work. And what we came up with was, were these mitigation measures. Where installing fully actuated traffic signals at the intersection of Hancock and Hayward, what that means is those traffic signals are now going to be automatic. They're going to work the same way the lights stop at Billings and Hancock work. In addition to installing those lights, we're going to coordinate, we're going to be put on a system so that they work in concert and consistent with the lights at Billings and at the Hannaford driveway. So these three red light systems are all going to be tied in together and they're going to work in a manner that is focused on keeping traffic flow on Hancock, north-south working property. In addition, there's going to be a left turn lane on Hancock at Hayward. Now, that is displayed on this screen here. What we're going to do, I showed you a picture of Hancock and you see it as just two lanes, one north, one south. Well, what's going to happen is this lane, the northbound lane, is going to be restriped and widened slightly to allow for a left turn lane for traffic looking to enter the site coming from the Walliston area. What that will do is allow traffic to continue to flow northbound on Hancock without being impeded as it is now by left-hand turns. Right now, if you're taking a left on Hayward, cars end up being blocked if there are folks parked in these spaces for the post office. This restriping is going to eliminate that issue. And in doing that, we believe it's not going to be a problem with southbound traffic. They're going to restripe a little bit. Any traffic in this lane is able to take a right turn into Hannaford irrespective of whether the light is red or not. You can take a right on red here, so we expect that the flow here will be smoother than southbound traffic. One of the thoughts about this whole program was that the, that whole corridor is already a very difficult part of the travel. So the issue is dealing with C-Mark was that bringing that use online is not going to make things worse. We believe it's not going to make things worse, but in addition, hopefully it's going to help the flow. Now, another step that we took, which I think is a good one, hopefully it works as it's designed, is the C-Mark lot previously, if you take the turn, you could enter right here. The main entrance into the C-Mark lot is just after Modern Art. Well, now, the only entrance into C-Mark is going to be at the end of Hayward Street. All cars, there's going to be do not enter signs placed here and you're not going to be allowed to go into the site on this end of Hayward. All cars have to come down Hayward and enter from the back end of the lot. We're hopeful that two things will be achieved. There won't be issues with traffic queuing getting into the lot and backing up causing problems at the intersection, number one. And then, number two, this is going to provide incentive for people to use Home Street and Holmes connects up with West Swanum. So we're hopeful that one of the travel patterns now will be if you're coming from the Moncler area, you'll come down Holmes, and if you're coming from the Swanum and Atlantic area, there's an incentive by crossing this intersection, coming down Holmes, you'll only encounter the one red light system here and you'll miss three or four red lights heading southbound on Hancock. So we believe that by making this the only entrance into C-Mark and causing all the traffic flow to go in this direction, that we're going to be creating a positive traffic dynamic that should help mitigate traffic impacts in the future. And one other measure that we've taken that we regard to be a good one is the mayor was concerned and Counselor Hughes was concerned, this is prior to your involvement, Counselor Harris, I was able to tell you about the solution of the problem, about the fact that we were going to be losing some on-street parking on Hancock or we actually preserved the spaces ultimately. But what we did is a little private way that runs between Modern Art and down Hayward. This is a little private way that runs behind Modern Art and behind the tire store. It's long been used for access to these buildings by the occupants of these buildings. Well, what we ended up doing is C-Mark owns right up to the boundary of that private way. What they have proposed to do is they're going to take some of their own land and put in spaces that are accessible from that little private way. This is going to be parking that's going to be available to the Wheelhouse Diner and to Modern Art. You'll be able to come down Hayward, turn in, use the, it's parallel parking. And then when you leave, you can use the C-Mark site as well. So again, it's another nice flow, it was a measure that the traffic engineer for C-Mark came up with. And you see, they're going to have do not enter signs located here so that all the flow is either this way or this way. So we think we've created good traffic flow dynamics at the site. We think we've done what we can on Hancock. In addition, there's one other issue, and this was one that was a concern of Mr. Harris because it involves his constituents. I had mentioned earlier Granite Lofts, which is right here. Oh, missed it. This residential condo, they have long been parking on Hayward in front of their building. Well, interestingly, what came out of the trial is that there are, this council voted no parking on Hayward Street on that side of the street. That vote has never been rescinded. The signs came down, but the no parking has never rescinded. That was a real bone of contention during the trial. What we're looking to do, and we believe this will be, have a terrific positive effect for the Granite Lofts, no parking signs are going to go back up if you vote favor this plan, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That will keep C-Mark traffic completely off of Hayward Street and in behind the building to minimize the impact to these residential property owners. But then they'll have the ability to park in front of their building or have guests park in front of their building during the overnight hours. So it's a little bit of the problem lines where they retain their on-street parking, but they do so during a period of time, you know, overnight and it's more likely they use, they, by the way, have full lot street parking on Home Street in these two lots. So we think it was a good compromise and we think it'll be very effective and ultimately well received by the Granite Lofts. Now, that covers all the traffic mitigation. C-Mark has pledged to educate consumers, they, there's one little panel here that some of you may have looked at that we've got a particular kick out of. Their traffic engineer was showing what traffic flows they're going to try to create around the site and they volunteered to put up signs to direct people. And yeah, that was, that would be very well received by Stop and Shop and Hand, because they get C-Mark signs all over the place. But the idea is that they will put a plan like this inside their building and they're going to encourage folks to consider these traffic routes, which will take C-Mark users off of Hayward Street, which is our real goal here. So that's the plan. In addition, they've agreed to some other items. One, Counselor Harris suggested to me during our first meeting, a locking carriage system so carriages can't come off the site. Given the location of this supermarket near the North Quincy Business District, that was a concern anyway, Mr. Harris raised it, I raised it to the C-Mark folks and they were very receptive. So they're going to come up with a plan or with a carriage program so the carriages can't come off the site. I'm not sure of how the technology works, but that was a request of Mr. Harris and it will be implemented, it was written into this plan. So that is the program. I'm not certain that there's much more we could do. We came up with a fairly comprehensive wish list, we reviewed it. C-Mark representatives are here tonight, Counselor David Wawoni, who's their local counsel, and Mr. Chapman, Chapman is a representative of C-Mark and Mr. Fang are both here this evening and they're not too interested in taking questions over to you, so are they? But maybe if I just made the presentation, I'm going to give the best way to go. They've endorsed this plan and they worked very cooperatively with us, I must say, through all the process. So they've agreed to this plan. I believe it to be a good one and recommend it based on my knowledge of the court case, the traffic situation as presented. I think this is the best thing that we can do in the current circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Timmons, thank you, Madam Chairman. The, related to the card technology or the shopping card containment system, I did want to note that I was going to receive an email from Natalie Nolan who advocated, I think, on that concept, of course, in that area, without naming other companies, but that's been a polite issue for a lot of folks in terms of banning shopping cards. But I would think, this being a special program authority, I would like to make certain that it's made part of the record that I did receive this particular suggestion. Basically outlines that, but I'd also like to, again, commend Counselor Harris for being on top of this, because again, he'd already doubled that issue with us, so thank you. As a resident of Ward Six, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Finn. Counselor.
Thank you. Ms. Solicitor, Jim, can you tell me, what is the remand language relative to traffic mitigation?
What is the specific language?
Yeah.
The last paragraph of the judge's decision says, "Since the evidence shows C-Mark's entitlement to a special permit, perance, the only objection is traffic and its traffic impact with mitigation will be minimal, if any, closed perance." That's the judge's conclusion, it's different from counsel's. "The application is remanded to the city council for issuance of the special permit, subject only to such reasonable mitigation conditions as may be imposed by the council. The court retains jurisdiction for purposes of reviewing those conditions." And at our last conference with the judge last week, I informed the judge what was going on and if there's a favorable vote, then I recommend that there be one. We will then send that into the court and the court's going to answer a judgment on this adjudicated in entirely.
So I still disagree with the judge on the traffic impact being minimal. I spent nine years committing to St. Mark's School and anybody who was driven through the city at school pickup times in the afternoon, thanks, having such a high-volume use into that area that is restricted by its location and finding the train tracks, I struggled with that. So I just, I disagree, I understand the situation we're in. I see the traffic proposal for mitigation that you presented to us and I definitely have a lot to, I've got some questions relative to that. Reasonable mitigation conditions as opposed by the council. One of the points I had raised during the SPGA was relative to access over the bridge. So in the south end of the city, we built the Hancock Way and we're talking about the Cloudwood District Bridge. Clearly, there is a need to bring traffic from Hancock over the MTA tracks and that's a big part of the problem for traffic in the city, particularly at the north end, is that here's this restriction by the MTA train tracks, that we can't get people on and off in the right access. Was there any discussion to say, I mean, again, what's reasonable, I mean, clearly it would be exorbitant expense, but it would help to solve the problem? And for me, if you're accessing, you know, why are the other supermarkets on main tracks, right? You've got all the other supermarkets in the city and they have that direct main access. They're not at the end of the dead end. And so I really struggle with pushing, you know, being forced to put this project into this location. So has there been any discussion about a bridge over the train tracks at the north end of the city?
Well, we did talk about it in this particular round, the mitigation. And if you take a look at your screen again, you'll see that the two areas we looked at were Billings Road and there's a pedestrian footbridge there. And then further back, you'll note that Newport Ave, the location of Newport Ave relative to the locus, it narrows a bit.
Yeah.
It's a little wider here than it narrows. Well, one of the issues is, is that the bridge would be, the radius of it, I would say, is just far too extreme. There's not enough distance there to put the type of bridge that would be necessary to clear the area and to do so safely. So, and then here, you have a private room building with parking and you have the pedestrian footbridge. So couldn't put one here, there was nowhere really to put one along this end because it's connecting to Hobart or North Central, you create traffic problems on Newport. So there is not an area really for us to connect a bridge other than where they are now on West Swanum and the deal.
So let me come back on the, I'm still going to stay on that topic, but the traffic mitigation proposal presented, has a cost, what is the estimated cost? And will that cost be incurred by C-Mark or by the city?
Well, everything that I've mentioned to you this evening, including the signs on Hayward Street, C-Mark's going to pay for all of it.
And what's the estimated value?
I'm not sure of the cost on that, blocking them into particular tasks. Like, I know that the signalization at Hayward that we talked about, the fully actuated signalization and synchronizing with the city system, that is costly. But other than that, oh, and then the other issue was the parking that I mentioned to you. This is going to be a fairly costly project as well because of the way the grays work. Topographically, C-Mark is lower than Hancock Street, there's a traffic grade. Well, they're going to level it all off and create this parking area. So there were two fairly substantial projects that they're going to want to take on-site.
But the reason that they need to create those parkings, the loss of parking, the loss of lane, the impact that this is going to have to those funding businesses, right? So... So, you know.
Right, and that's why they're tied together. That's what mitigation should be. The one, the one little issue is, though, that we were also able to preserve the parking. I had mentioned to you, I'm hesitant to go back to Hancock Street. I'll see if I can get there. But I had mentioned that there was parking on Handcock, up here in front of the post office. Well, we were able to preserve those spots with the way that we're going to do the striking. So.
No, actually, they are being eliminated.
Excuse me?
The plan that was proposed, presented to us, had those spots eliminated. They're now returned.
You see that we kept all the parking on Handcock.
Okay. Can we go to, you had, I guess I'm looking at traffic flow. Can I ask some concerns there? So, one, private way, adding parking. I'll tell you that it looked like you were reversing the flow. You know, myself, as a customer of Hand and Tire, I come down the hill. Once I get the work done, I'll come back and go versus trying to coming up that sweeping line to access the property. Are we then changing the flow of traffic if the arrows on that Hand and Parkway, I'm sorry, that Hand and Tire access? It only has one arrow going the wrong way.
Are you talking about having the flow run down this way to get in?
No, I'll get to that, though. Go back to that other slide with the, with this show.
Picture?
Yep.
Or the slide?
The slide.
Okay.
Yep, here. So, where you see the, on the private way, you see an arrow from Hayward towards Hand and Tire?
Right.
Typically, the traffic comes down the hill.
You can't enter this way. I know that one-way sign is pointing in, but that's because graphically, that's all they can do.
Right, go back up, go up to the private way.
This area?
Yes, that has an arrow accessing off of Hayward Street. That is not going to be two-way?
This street, this whole way?
Correct, private way, yep.
Right, it's not going to be, and it's not wide enough really to be anywhere.
So, okay.
They're going to exit through the C-Mart parking lot.
And this has been presented to that, to Jimmy Shire? To the Loft folks, that they've reviewed this?
No.
Change of traffic from their business?
Uh, we're not changing the traffic flow. Right now, it's a private way here.
Yeah.
And when I, I'm not sure how they would use it, frankly. They either drive in and back out, or they drive in, turn around, and pull up.
So, I'll tell you.
It's a private way, and C-Mart owns the entire length of this side of the private way, so they have a right of control over it.
Right.
All they're doing is adding parking. That's going to be to the advantage of these folks.
I understand that. What I'm telling you is, as a customer, and Jimmy Shire, when you turn off of Hancock to access them, you typically come in from Hancock Street. You turn down, and down is a very steep hill. And then, that hill dead ends after you get your work done. And you leave in opposite direction via that private way, because you don't want the sightline coming up that hill to turn off to Hancock Street. And I feel.
Where's the steep hill? Are you saying on Hayward?
So, back up, come, come the other direction, come towards Hand and Park.
Okay. Oh, you've come out, you're saying you can out this driveway sometimes by the tire store?
Okay, turn, yep, okay, right there, the driveway, there was an arrow in.
You can still do that.
No, what I'm saying is, when you turn in, typically, access, their customers use that driveway as an access point. It's a very difficult egress point. So typically, you enter to get your work done at this business, you turn down the driveway off of Hancock, and then you utilize the private way to come back towards Hayward.
Yeah, well, now what you'll do is you'll.
Now you're not allowing that.
You'll just come down and just go out this way. Rather than going down the private way.
You'll come through the C-Mart.
Rather than coming down and going down the private way, you come down and come out through C-Mart.
And has this proposal been presented to the abutting business owners? That they understand what the impact is going to be to them, their customers?
No. If it's approved, it's surable, but right now, it's not.
I guess, is that a war of five?
Well, yes, excuse me.
Yep.
So, I guess the question is really a point of clarification. And I understand, Councilor Forrest, concerns about all of that. However, I guess the question is, we have to vote on this this evening. If we do not pass this plan, correct, we are just going to get the C-Mart with no mitigation.
Right, well, I'm hopefully, when I get it out there.
No, well, that's what I'm understanding, right? But if we don't pass the plan, as you vouch on, this evening, then the judge will say, that's really too bad, because now you don't have to do any mitigation, C-Mart. This is just going up.
Right.
Right? So, and I, I understand what Councilor Forrest is getting at, and, and I think it's important. Look, I, I didn't agree with the judge's characterization of a lot of things that happened in this body. And it's unfortunate that we are in this situation, and it's more than unfortunate. It's, it's devastating for a lot of the folks in that area. But at this point, I'm very hopeful that the mitigation that I know has been worked on for months, and, you know, in good faith, will do just that and address those issues. And, um, I mean, I know we have to go for this, for this, not deal, but this, this mitigation this evening, or we could end up with something without any mitigation.
Yeah, there really isn't much to do here.
To do here.
This is a very tight site with not a lot of options. We're not talking to the neighbors, because it doesn't impact them until we vote this. And frankly, that particular area, that whole section there is blocked off by Stewart Tire. I don't know that too many people drive through there. But instead of going this way, they're going to go this way. It's a very.
Has a, has a, go ahead, Jim.
Has a public access easement been granted through the C-Mart parking lot, through that private way?
Well, this is all in the C-Mart owns. And they're agreeing to it.
They own the full, okay, typically, on the private way, their butter owns the, their butters own to the middle, right? That's typi, the typical layout of ownership. So that means Hand and Tire, as a rear of butter, owns to the middle of that private way.
Right.
Okay, and then, um, I know while I'm not in the wheelhouse, what's there, two more homeowners?
Two residents, right.
So they then have, we are, but own, those two property owners own to the middle of the private way. Correct? So, so it looks like Mar and R, two houses in Hand and Parkway, share ownership in the private way.
Right.
I have to tell you, I'm very uncomfortable voting on something that has a direct, I, I think we have a legal issue there, that they have not had an opportunity, and we as a body are voting a change to the use of property they control. We are saying, hey, C-Mart's going to make parking on their property, fine.
Why, I tell you, we don't have a legal issue. We absolutely do not.
Relative to those property owners?
We absolutely do not. They have, they have an ownership in the fee, but it's subject to the rights of all the other butters who pass, and we pass over it. So, all the butters have a right to repass. I'll, I'll go back and show you a picture. I mean, this is not any sort of, um, area of any interest to anyone.
I think the customer, the owners of the properties and their customers.
What's that?
I, you're saying has some interest to no one. I, I find, I disagree. If I'm the owner of Hand, of Jimmy Shire, and that's how my customers access my business, you're changing, making it more difficult.
No, we're not.
Requiring, requiring access through private property to egress. Let's say I'm the owner of Jimmy's Tire, right?
Well, they go out a private way now. They're going out private way this way, if they even go out there.
Yes, they do.
And I don't know that they do.
I factually, I factually will tell you, as a customer, for a long time, going there, when I go there, that's how I egress that property. What you're saying is that, you know, I, the customer, can no longer egress towards Hayward. You're forcing through this plan, the customer, to egress through private property of C-Mart.
Right. So rather than going down this way.
Right, you're changing the direction of the access, and.
No, they can access, I, they're accessing.
Does it need to be one-way?
This theoretical that you're posing, they still access the driveway where they wish to.
Right, that's like the entrance. I mean, it's difficult to exit that way, so you exit out the back.
To come out this way?
Yeah, it's very difficult, just due to the topography of the site. And then you're coming to a light, chances are there's traffic blocked.
Well, no one's coming out this way.
Not in this picture, but have you been in Hancock Street, you know, at a busy time of day?
No, what I'm saying is, I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure what I agree about. Here's the deal.
You're changing a budding property.
No, we're not. Absolutely not true. If someone who's in this parking lot here and wants to come out here, they still can't. We're not touching that gentleman's property. No one's going near his property. What's happening is, is in the rear.
Yep.
There is a private way.
Only by the.
That is essentially like being in Montana in the eighteen hundreds. It is totally unregulated. No regulation whatsoever. What we're going to do is the traffic flow, there's no signage going in. So if someone wants to come down here and go this way, they can.
That was the question. You have an arrow, and I said you're reversing the direction.
But that's just a traffic flow indicator for how we would like to see it used. But it's a very narrow way. I'll show you a picture of that.
I, I've been on it very familiar, but you cannot, us, the city of Quincy, cannot install traffic signage on a private way, changing the direction through a one-way, without the.
Well, no, that's a, that's a flow map. That's all that was. But frankly, if I'm coming out of this private way, this is it. It's all overgrown, it's not all that wide. C-Mart is going to contribute.
So C-Mart owns that. Why are they not maintaining that section of the.
C-Mart owns everything from this side of the fence here. From this side of the fence heading toward the tracks, C-Mart owns the land. Right now, there are parking spaces. What they're agreeing to do, given the fact that this is a very wide opening, and they're now going to make it a do-not-enter, meaning that traffic can only come out, so they're narrowing the use here. What they're going to do is they're going to create these spaces, move the, um, the vertical parking back a bit. They're going to create these spaces off of the private way. That's the boundary line there. So it's all on C-Mart property. And people who go to the Wheelhouse Diner, or to the, to, um, the art sign store, they can park here and then just come out. And if someone wants to come out of here, rather than going down this private way, and if a truck pulls in to go to the, the sign store, they're going to get blocked. They're going to flow unimpeded out this way. So it actually creates a, a good flow.
And I think that's a great update, to say, do not enter, send it down, keep the tra, traffic from backing up. I think that's a really great, uh, solution, piece of the solution. You know, when we were permitting this South Oak Manor, either they were putting very large project on a small equipment, and they asked us to buy the abutting property, because they can't return, uh, they can't return, so they could benefit, benefit the neighborhood, and we were able to get cars down the street. I mean, I just look at, who's the, who's the property owner of that big rear parking lot? Is that the Grand Loft parking lot? In the, at the end of Hayward Street?
These lots here?
Who owns that?
These lots are at Grand Loft. Well, part of it's Grand Loft. I believe this lot might be with this building.
So, when you were looking at the traffic flow and the opportunities for improvement for reasonable mitigation, to, and I understand this is a topographical challenge, and this is why, you know, I had a known vote in the first place, is with the traffic and the conditions, they're failing. They're currently existing failing, and we're, you know, it's, it's going to continue to be a failing. We're going to make some improvements, but we need a, a solution for this end-of-the-city traffic. I think major ruins that are made at the, uh, Handcock, West Swan intersection has been terrific, but there's more that could be dealt with traffic mitigation in the area. When you were talking about opportunities for a bridge over the tracks in the north end of the city, was, did the applicant look at wiring the budding parcels to see if that could be facilitated?
No, because, as I mentioned earlier, you just can't do a bridge. The bridge would have to coordinate with Newport Ave, so it doesn't impact the flow there. Newport's a four-lane, more south, with limited interruption. So, right now, the only places where there's signalization, we could possibly do one, are at Hobart, or here at Holbrook. And we looked at those, and just, it, it just wasn't going to work. There was no really disputing that. So we did look at it, uh, but it, it just can't be done.
Okay, and then, to the last, you had referenced in your comments about the little side road that cuts from West Swan to this property, which is, you know, accessible to Hayward. And, um, you talked about how you'd be bringing.
Holbrook.
Holmes, right?
Yes, Holmes, yeah.
And that has a section, it doesn't go down to West Swan currently. It's one-way, as you're leaving the library by, since the bank. Are you proposing that that be made two-way? Is that part of the changes?
No. No, it'll stay one-way. The, the notion is that, um, the way traffic leaves the supermarket will be a little different from the way it accesses it. Because, um, ways, you know, people may end up queuing on Handcock, the red lights, if they're heading here. But because of the way they leave at different times, they're either go out Hayward to actuate an intersection now, or they may go down Holmes, um, to either Billings, where there's a red light, or they may cut off Burgess, try to beat the red light. But it seems that it's going to be either exiting via Billings, or exiting via Hayward.
Was there, was the.
Holmes is two-way here.
Right.
It's one-way into Billings.
Was there discussion about Hayward being converted to a one-way?
Uh, no.
I mean, just look at.
Never.
It's just tight to get people down there. I mean, this is a real challenge in.
Yeah, well, it's wide enough. That was one of the reasons we get into the, uh, one of the reasons we get into the one-way. Let me just see if I can get a picture of it up again. But one of the reasons, rather than parking, that we talked about, the parking requirement that we get, was when there's no parking on, on Hayward, um, you're okay in this building. I forget the, the width of it, but it is wide enough, um, to accommodate traffic, two-way traffic, if you don't have cars parked. And that presumably part of the point of the, the no parking that was voted back in the nineties, and, um, has never been rescinded. So this is all going to be open, and you can see right now, clearly, the traffic could flow down it. And then imagine it without those cars here. I agree with you, it's a very tough site. And the traffic engineer spent a lot of time on this. We had a couple of different asks. And C-Mart, um, and their representatives didn't try to make them law. And that's what I'm saying, this was the best we could do. And a lot of the issues that you were talking about, and I, Councilor, were ones that were pressed trial and essentially rejected by the judge. Because what he's saying is, is this property owner should not be held accountable for all the issues in that neighborhood.
And I can understand that, right? But, and I, I, I understand that. I just look at, why are all the supermarkets at, on Main Street, not on the dead end? Right, there's a reason that they bring a heavy traffic load, they bring, you know, a lot of egress. This is a really oversaturated area. We're, we're pushed beyond capacity existing. I understand the zoning laws, I understand the zoning laws for even more development, by right development, as opposed to this project. I just wanted to see something a bit more creative. I wanted to see, you know, a north end bridge over the train tracks, something that gets traffic and gives them, you know, frontage on Newport Ave. But, uh, this is a struggle. I feel like I'm back to the Pima flood maps, right? So, we have to vote this, we have to support it. We need a two-thirds majority. We only have five councilors able to vote. We don't have the word, you know, well, technically, we're five, but being budding. You know, um, constituents are major impacted with one-six. So, I'm really glad to hear that, um, the one-six council has been engaged through your office. And, uh, I am very uncomfortable making changes to property. I know that when we put the Billings Road, many more properties on the private way, and the butters, you know, share ownership lines in the way. And we have some, there was some legal issues that were, that are raised. And I, I'm just feeling that we haven't addressed those. And my other concern is that when we have SPGA, it's very much a public process. It requires a public hearing. We're now making changes that, in accepting this, was a butter notification sent? Was the, I mean, I understand we're under a deadline for, for final ports, but I have a real struggle that the immediate abutters don't see changes we're about to make, and, oh, well, after it's done, I'll let you know. I just don't, uh, that's not. I just don't, that's not how I operate in 1-1. I, I don't like that we're making changes and they don't have input in. And it's something we're stuck with. So, I just.
Well, I mean, this is a reman, doesn't require any notice. Even if we did notify people, I wish I could, I, I tried on several occasions, just the way that Google Earth thing works, you can't get a look down that alley. But it's just, this alley is going to be opened up and enhanced.
Which is a little.
And the people who are, who are parking in it are going to be, are coming in off of Hayward. They're going to be facing that direction. We have it all set up for them to just flow right out, not back out. They don't have anywhere to turn around in that alley. If someone wants to come out of the tire store at the other end of the alley, they can and come down it. Or they can come out through C-Mark and flow right out of the site. We all would like to have a better plan here, but this is a very limited site where, you know, this is an industrially zoned site with industrial uses all around. And, or at least a couple. And it's tough. So, we've really looked at this in several different ways and from several different views.
So, those will be privately owned parking spots that will be on the C-Mark property, but they will be allowance through a condition for public use. Is that correct?
Who, C-Mark?
So, in the alley, in the alley, there's creation of parking spots.
These spaces are located on C-Mark property.
Correct. So, they're private, technically, they're private spaces.
Yeah, they're devoted to public use.
And they're devoted through a condition in planning documents that will confirm that it's public use. So, that, that give the customers of Modern Art.
Modern Art, Wheelhouse.
Wheelhouse, they'll be able to utilize those spaces.
Folks from across the street in the condo association. This is going to be unregulated. There are eight or nine spots and whoever uses them, uses them. They're intended for the neighborhood, really to supplement because we would make an off-street parking a real issue. And essentially, a loss of the off-street parking that's not supposed to exist over here is what's being replaced down the alley, the private alley.
And aside from that, is the C-Mark application parking compliant? Or is their parking believed a source of that project?
The parking, the onsite parking is all, all covered, is all set. The only, the sole issue we got was off-site traffic. All the onsite conditions were met. And that was another issue with this.
I mean, it's the access to me, it's the access.
We think the access plan, you know, forcing everyone to go all the way down Hayward is a good one.
I guess that's a great solution. That's a great solution.
Yeah, and that's.
Backing up, which you asked.
You asked the creative and that was most, yeah. I'm, I'm with you though, but.
And so, is there anyone with us that knows the cost of the mitigation or estimate?
Don't know. They, I know that C-Mark doesn't know either because.
But all of these improvements will be done. Is it going to be a city managed project? Because it's our, the infrastructure that they'll put mitigation funds into as the account, is that how it's going to be handled? And how do we assure they pay for the whole fee?
Well, you have to complete the work, so.
But that's what I'm saying, who's the project manager? The city or C-Mark?
Oh, C-Mark would be. And they'd have to work with our traffic engineers to make sure that when the signalization goes in at the end of Hayward, it'd be similar what happened on North Quincy High School. Same type of thing, there'd be vendors who'd come in, but C-Mark would bring them in. They'd install the signalization and then they'd coordinate it in concert with our Deborah Finnegan.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council of course. Yes, Counselor, come in.
More approval is required.
All right. Second, I think Counselor Finnegan. Anyone who should be part of the, yeah. All right, same now, now, correct.
One for both.
Yes.
One for both of us.
Yes.
One for both of you.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to work on this and I'll report back when we get the final cut.
All right. So, this time we will, is there a motion, Twitter?
Clear.
Motion, right, right. All of the favor?
Right.
Great.